Good morning, the council will come to order. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum roll call is now open. The quorum roll call is now open. Please use your e-device to submit your vote. If you need support, please raise your hand. I will now call on those that have not used their e-device. Alder Person Hopkins. Alder Person Hopkins is present. Alder Person Robinson. Not present in chambers. Alderman Hall, Alder Person Hall. Not present in chambers. Alder Person Gutierrez. Not present in chambers. Alder Person Lopez. Not present in chambers. Alder Person Coleman. Not in chambers. Alder Person Moore. Alder Person Moore is present. Alder Person Taylor. Not in chambers. Alder Person Scott. Alder Person Scott is present. Alder Person Fuentes. Alder Person Fuentes is present. Alder Person Burnett. Not in chambers. Alder Person Wagis Pack. Not in chambers. Alder Person Maria Ramirez Rosa. Not in chambers. Alder Person Vegas. Alder Person Vegas is present. Alder Person Soto. Not present. Alder Person Gardner. Not present in chambers. Alder Person Clay. Not present in chambers. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. With, um, there are thirty-eight present. Twelve that are not in chambers. So thank you, we do have a quorum. There are a number of alders who have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely. They are able to do this for reasons stated in Rule fifty-nine. Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation of the following alders? Robinson, Gutierrez, Taylor, Clay, and Burnett. It's been moved. Thank you very much. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed say nay, this motion carries. Please mark the following alders as participating remotely today and present for the quorum call. And it's Robinson, Gutierrez, Taylor, Clay, and Burnett. With that, please stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered today by Pastor Dustin Moore, Ravenswood Baptist Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good morning, and thank you City Council for your work. Would you join me in prayer, please? Almighty God, we give thanks and praise this morning for all of your good works. You are loving, good, and gracious. Thank you for creating us, sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with other people. We thank you for our city, our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. This morning, Lord, we acknowledge that we do not deserve these good gifts. We are not worthy of your favor. We have sinned against you in our words, our deeds, and our thoughts. We do the things that we should not do, and we don't do the things that we should do. We've not loved you with our whole heart. We have failed to love our neighbors as ourselves. So this morning, we appeal to Jesus, who died for our sins. Forgive us and give us hearts of obedience to your holy word. Thank you that Christ Jesus rose from the dead and now reigns as King over heaven and earth. And because Jesus is Lord, we, pastors, civil leaders, can serve you in a way that we've been called to serve. Grant today that our city would be known as a righteous city. A city that confesses Christ as Lord, a city of peace, of hope, a city with happy homes, a city that welcomes the stranger, a city that cares for the needy, a city that defends the innocent from evil doers. Lord, we thank you for our civil government. Those who bear the sword do so as your ministers to be a terror to crime and those that would do evil. I pray today for our civil servants that they would acknowledge the calling that you've given them and that they would execute it faithfully. Help us all, as President Biden has reminded us this week, to be considerate of those with whom we disagree. Gracious in how we discuss, loving in how we work on all matters of business and policy. I pray specifically today for Mayor Johnson, his family, for each alderperson, their families, that you would keep them safe. Grant them the wisdom they need for their jobs to serve our city. Be with our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement. Grant that they would never neglect or abuse their authority, but that they would stand firm with truth and justice. Keep them safe from harm as they serve our city and our communities. I pray for this council meeting today. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items that are before them. Every decision, be righteous in your sight. May it be for the good of the citizens of this city and for your ultimate glory, Heavenly Father. I pray all of this in the name that is above every name, the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Man, you may be seated. Mr. Clerk, this is the portion of the meeting. Meeting will come back to order. This meeting will come back to order. Please settle down in the chambers, please. Thank you very much. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Jody Whitaker.
Jody, please press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chicago City Council and Mayor Johnson. My name is Jody Whitaker, and I run this all-volunteer grassroots organization, Chicago Alliance for Animals. Back in two thousand, Chicago became the largest city in the United States to ban dangerous and exploitative horse-trawn carriages. Your body passed this common sense measure by an overwhelming margin of forty-six to four. One year later, you unanimously voted to close the loophole that allowed pet stores to sell puppies and dogs from cruel puppy mills. The second city is a progressive city, and a logical next step is to ban the sale of new fur products in Chicago. We all know that there are amazing, less-expensive synthetic alternatives that can keep us warm in Chicago's bitter cold winters. So there's absolutely no need to extremely confine millions of wild animals in cramped, filthy wire cages in all-weather extremes only to take their lives via suffocation, electrocution, gas, and poison. In addition to the extreme suffering, fur farms are reservoirs and transmission vectors for dangerous unotic diseases, including SARS, coronaviruses that threaten public health, including in the city of Chicago. The fur production process is energy-intensive and has a significant environmental impact, including air and water pollution. Runoff from the fur production process contains high concentrations of phosphorus and nitrogen, which are the most common forms of water pollution in the United States. This bill was introduced nearly one year ago today, and now it's time to put it on the agenda in the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. This humane ordinance now has twenty-one cosponsors, and multiple other alderpersons have told us that they support it. Alderwoman Silverstein, you were a cosponsor on both bills to ban horse carriages and puppy mill sales. As Chair of the License Committee, you have another wonderful opportunity to make Chicago a more compassionate city. Let's join the sixteen U.S. cities that have banned fur sales and the twenty-five countries that have banned fur farming to prevent the torture of skinning animals alive for fashion. Thank you very much for your time and consideration, and on behalf of CAA's more than three thousand members, I truly hope O two thousand twenty-three dash two nine eight three gets on the agenda for a discussion and vote as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Lorraine.
Hi, my name is Lorraine. I've lived in Chicago for almost a decade, and I'm one of the O'Hare Forty. I want to first shout out the Obama CBA campaign, who are here upstairs but did not get picked for public comment. The city should stop wasting resources on prosecuting protesters and focus on defending Black and Brown Chicagoans from abusive housing conditions. The O'Hare defendants sent this letter to the mayor on July second and have not received a response. So now, we are making sure that he hears it. Dear Mayor Johnson, we are writing to urge you to have the Corporation Council drop the city's charges against the O'Hare Forty, the pro-Palestinian protesters who were arrested on Tax Day, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, on a highway to O'Hare Airport. We believe that the city's law department pressing criminal misdemeanor charges of obstructing traffic, even after the state's attorney has dropped their charges, is an excessive response to nonviolent protest and civil disobedience. The frustration and anger of the Palestinian people has reached a boiling point, and several protesters from Palestinian, Arab, Black, Muslim, Jewish, and Ashkenazi communities hold deep connections to the cause, with loved ones and family members impacted, and deep reverence for indigenous communities everywhere. The White House has both politically and financially supported the merciless killings of thousands of innocent civilians in this genocide with no end in sight. Following the radical tradition of civil disobedience in Chicago, from the Woodlawn Mental Health Clinic occupation of two thousand twelve to the diet-hunger strike of two thousand fifteen, we believe in the power of direct action when no other tactics work meaningfully. We exercise our First Amendment rights and participated in nonviolent protest. In fact, no flights were canceled as a result. Merely some travelers inconvenienced. While Gazans face a vastly different and convenient reality, American taxpayer-funded genocide. Targeting us will further isolate liberation movements everywhere. Additionally, prosecuting and convicting the O'Hare Forty and all protesters at this time is a clearly a misuse and abuse of resources, whether it be the state or the city doing so. Several of us, including myself, supported your campaign in many capacities, and we all stand by a shared vision to reimagine Chicago as a city that invests in Black and Brown communities. Like your administration steps towards reopening our city's mental health clinics and establishing an alternative to calling the police during mental health crises. For decades, our leaders on all levels of government have ceded political power to corporate interests, whether it be the LaSalle Street greed or death-making weapons manufacturing companies like Boeing. We know that this only harms Black and Brown communities, depriving our communities of resources and funding from affordable housing to universal healthcare. We hope that the city will protect the rights of protesters.
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is... Our next speaker is Christian Urbano. Christian Urbano. Our next speaker is Seamus O'Sullivan.
Good morning, City Council. Mayor Johnson. My name is Seamus O'Sullivan. I'm from Old Irving Park in the thirtieth ward. I'm speaking on behalf of my city of Chicago, a city that wants for families to stop being displaced by passing the Northwest and South Shore Preservation Ordinances. Over the last couple of weeks, I've talked with hundreds of people and informed them about these ordinances, and the vast majority of them have expressed their support. Many of them have also shared with me their struggles to stay in their communities, which was just absolutely heartbreaking to listen to. While this issue may not affect me nor my family, I've seen far too many of my friends and fellow Chicagoans displaced, and we're not taking it anymore. We're not taking it anymore, because this is it. If you have a backbone or any sense for what's right, you'll support the Northwest and South Shore Preservation Ordinances and keep the people who you protect, who you swore to protect in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is TJ Hughes. TJ Hughes.
TJ Hughes, you only have thirty seconds left. No, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, help me. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning.
Good morning, City Council. I am Teresa TJ Hughes. I am here because I want to clear up a misunderstanding that I made in the Budget Committee hearing in regards to the Department of Procurement Services. I want to be clear that the compliance team in the procurement services does a fantastic job, and I want to make sure that I name the... I think she's a managing deputy, I'm not really quite sure. Her name is Tammy Morgan. She does a hell of a job, and if we just give her more staff and more money, I think that they could help the people in Chicago get more knowledge on how to properly bid for these jobs. I definitely want to make sure that I still and still strong, wholeheartedly want Eileen Valesquez, who is the Chief Procurement Officer, removed. I think she should be fired because for her to sit up and have nine percent of Black contractors getting only... not nine percent, I'm sorry, two percent of the contracts of over eight hundred million dollars given to Black contractors is just ludicrous. And then Hispanics get thirty percent, and then the Asians who have just, like, really come aboard, get six percent. So I'm all for the Asians because they're new. Really, but it's ridiculous that Black people have been here helped to build this nation, and we're only getting two percent. That's ridiculous. So I think that, hopefully, Mr. Mayor, I have asked you, I send a letter, I send letters to all of these aldermen, Black, White, whatever, and I hope that you all grow up here and get her out of here immediately because she is detrimental to this city, Mr. Mayor. She's detrimental to your reputation, and I know in my heart that you want to do the right thing. So, please. Can I... okay, there's a smile. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Tom Quinn.
Hi, I've been a resident of Illinois for fifty-two years, and I am a State Chapter Director for United Sovereign Americans, a national nonpartisan project working to restore legal and certifiable elections. There are about twenty volunteers from our group here today, about three hundred in the state, five thousand across the country. This work is currently underway in twenty-seven states so far. Today, I come to you, some of our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We have a website, UniteForFreedom.com. That's unite, the number four, freedom.com, where you can get additional information. I'll read a portion of our resolution. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, and the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise. Reynolds v. Sims, three seventy-seven, U.S. five thirty-three, from nineteen sixty-four. Whereas it is the affirmative duty of our election officials to comply with all federal and state laws governing administration and procedure of our elections, thereby guaranteeing our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, "Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law." Unquote. In Recoy, one twenty-seven, U.S. seven thirty-one of eighteen eighty-eight. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works with the worth when the worth of honest ballots is not diluted by invalid ballots procured by corruption, and assuring accuracy can only be achieved through fealty to those laws governing the following four tenets of an election. One, voter rolls must be accurate according to National Voter Registration Act of nineteen ninety-three. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, the U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in one hundred and twenty-five thousand ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act two thousand and two. Whereas an open-source audit of the two thousand twenty-two general election conducted by Illinois state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate both federal and state laws, including four million, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and one ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Illinois state voter roll database. Five hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five votes cast in the twenty-two midterm by ineligible or uncertain registrations. Twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one more votes counted than voters who voted in the twenty-two general election. Five hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard. In twenty-two, the election in Illinois, this number was thirty-three. Certification is defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. We ask to be placed on the agenda in a future meeting and where we can have a complete presentation and a vote on our resolution, which I have a copy of for the mayor, and if I can leave it with someone.
Thank you. You can leave it with somebody. Thank you very much. Our next speaker this morning is Gabrielle Miller.
Good morning. My name is Gabriel. I'm a member of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression, which is a chapter of the National Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. And this is a national org that is fighting tirelessly in cities across the country to expand police accountability. And Chicago is in a unique position to be the headlights of this movement for police accountability, to expand the powers of people in Chicago to say who polices our communities and how our communities are policed. The current phase of this historic struggle takes the form of the Referendum Ordinance for Community Power Over Policing. The referendum for community power over policing would expand the powers of the currently existing Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability and make it directly elected. The crucial powers that will be expanded include the ability to negotiate the Fraternal Order of Police contract, the ability to set the budget for CPD, and the ability to hire and fire the police superintendent. I want to talk about the FOP contract briefly. The people of Chicago deserve and need the power to control what happens in a contract that is currently designed to literally allow CPD to get away with murder. This contract consistently passes through City Council without so much as a breath of resistance, and this is not acceptable. This contract is the main tool used by the Fraternal Order of Police and its lackeys in City Hall to undermine the gains made by the movement for police accountability. And why would alders like Silvana Tabarez, Jim Gardner, and Anthony Napolitano ever oppose this anti-accountability contract when they received over sixty thousand dollars in donations from the FOP in two thousand twenty-three? The people of Chicago must have a directly elected body committed to holding the police accountable, negotiating this contract. We need every alderperson to support the Referendum Ordinance for Community Power Over Policing. You don't even have to support what's in the referendum. You just have to support the right of Chicagoans to decide for themselves how much say we want in how policing happens in this country. This is a matter of life and death. I also want to support the CBA Coalition and the LSNA in their fight for affordable housing and against unfair rent increases. These communities in Woodlawn and South Shore, as well as in Logan Square, deserve to be able to live in the communities where they and their families have always lived. We demand a community benefits agreement in both cases, and we demand the passage of the Northwest and South Shore Preservation Ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Hattie Kanazey.
Take your time. Yep.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson, and good morning, City Council members. My name is Hattie Kanazey, and I am a twenty-five-year resident of South Shore, and prior to that, a long-term resident of Woodlawn. I am a voter, and I vote every election, as does every member in my family. I'm here in support of the Community Benefits Agreement. This agreement not only affects renters, it affects homeowners such as myself. Homeowners, I am a homeowner of a multifamily unit. And what is happening is in South Shore, and I believe it's in the entire city, citywide, approximately thirty-two percent of all recent purchases have been made by corporations. When this happens, you lose control of rent. They, I've seen where they... where the quality of the housing has declined when these corporations take over. And they increase... Once they basically rate all of the profit out of the buildings, they sell them. They sell them at exorbitant rates. I get a call every day, several times a day, wanting to buy my building. And they're very forceful about it. And what happens is, then they sell them after they've raked all of the profit out of them at these increased rates. My taxes go up, and they force me out. And where do I go? I looked at the parkways on sixty-seven, beginning just past Stony Island. And those were originally low-income housing. I can tell from the rehab that those are not going to be low-income. I can tell from the appliances that are going in and the cabinetry that's going in that these will not be low-income. My question to each of you is, where did these people go? Where will they live? When you force me out, where will I go? I'll be seventy-seven on Saturday. What happens to my generational wealth? What I'm trying to pass on to my grandchildren? So it's not just a matter of them having a place to go because they will not have a place to go. a place to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelvin Hensoyana Rayano, and I am here to ask you all to support the Northwest Preservation Ordinance under South Shore Preservation Ordinance. Families of color are facing displacement due to radical increase of rent and property taxes. Who thinks rents are too high or property taxes are too high? Yes, no? Many people call this development, but development for who? Two, three, four unit buildings are being demolished and replaced with single-family luxury homes, which are selling for more than $1 million. And what happened with those families, those two, three, four families that used to live there? They are displaced. Parents are forced to move farther away from their jobs, and kids farther away from their schools. Development for who? No, for people of color. We need better policies that protect our communities. Policies that help to fix the atrocity that racism has created in this country and in this city. Do you remember redlining? Its consequences are still here. We need more policies like the Northwest Preservation Ordinance and the South Shore Preservation Ordinance, because those policies are made by our communities for our communities. Politicians here, please listen to us and make the right decision. What do you support? Are you with the people, the families of color with your constituency? Or are you with these so-called developers that profit for the displacement of our communities? Say yes to the Northwest Preservation Ordinance and yes to the South Shore Preservation Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Lupita Delgado.
Hello all, my name is Lupita Delgado, and I am here with Palenque LSNA. Now, I am here because I believe housing is a human right, and I believe housing is also about a community where you feel safe and where you feel welcomed. However, there are instances when communities are being torn apart by displacement, as was mine. My elementary school friends were forced to move out of the neighborhood due to high rents and property taxes. Now, the counterargument by developers is that these, my friends could just make new friends, but this is deeper than just friendship. It's about stability. It's about a childhood. Now, my friends had to finish their academic year at other schools, meaning it was harder for them, easier for them to actually fall behind. Now, I ask you to stand up and to protect the education of kids like my friends. Now, a false narrative regarding displacement exists. Unfortunately, unfortunately, it is often viewed positively because the neighborhood is changing, because investment is occurring, but this investment hurts low-income families like mine. This investment, I feel like it's often what that low-income families are moving out of their neighborhood unwillingly. Now, this is extremely classist and deeply rooted in capitalism. From 2000 to 2014, more than 19,000 Latinx residents were displaced from Logan Square, my neighborhood, my neighbors. Now, I view displacement as a monster under my bed. I know it can hurt me and my family. However, I am gaslighted by a society that enjoys blaming people for their situations and not the system that creates these cycles of harm for marginalized communities. Today, I ask you, Mayor Brandon Johnson, and all the alderpeople present, to support the Northwest Preservation Ordinance and the South Shore Preservation Ordinance. Let's help make Chicago the city of hope and peace you all so lovingly prayed about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is August.
Hello. I am a lifelong Chicagoland resident, and I'm here today on behalf of the many Chicagoans, including the O'Hare 40, who are being retaliated against by our city law department for practicing our right to protest through thoughtful civil disobedience. This is puzzling, from a city that routinely uplifts and celebrates movements and people from the past who use their voices and bodies to protest injustice. However, for those of us who are protesting the ongoing U.S.-funded genocide in Gaza, there is no such respect. Instead, the city law department under Mayor Brandon Johnson insists on wasting resources, doggedly pursuing misdemeanor charges on protesters that cause no harm to the city. This is transparently an attempt to intimidate pro-Palestine protesters and dissuade us from continuing to call for an end to the U.S.-funded genocide as the spotlight settles on our city for the upcoming DNC. But while the focus for now from the city law department is on silencing those of us speaking up for Palestine, we know that this signals a dangerous precedent for all future protesters and will likely harm the most vulnerable among us, especially Black communities most often targeted by law enforcement. Our beautiful city has a long and important history of civil disobedience, from the legendary Chicago Freedom Movement that brought the Fair Housing Act of 1968, to the heroic Woodlawn Mental Health Clinic occupation of 2012, to the courageous Diet Hunger strike of 2015. Mayor Johnson, you take pride in your participation in that very hunger strike. If we can't even assemble to speak and not harm anyone or any property to protest our government pouring millions of dollars into a genocide of our people, then we have virtually no right to protest at all. This is a critical moment to ensure the ability to protest for fair housing measures like the Obama CBA demands to fight against displacement, like investments in public education and community safety measures like the Peacebook ordinance. I am tired of watching the government use my tax dollars to bomb the families of my Palestinian friends and neighbors. I am tired of watching the government use my tax dollars to harass, brutalize, kill, and cage my family and friends on the West Side. I am tired of being told that the only acceptable response to these injustices is to swallow my grief, shut up, and vote. The city is wasting resources on protesters while Chicagoans face a housing crisis and continued abusive policing practices. We have a right to assemble in defense of human rights. When Mayor Johnson ran, he repeatedly said that he hoped the movement would not turn their back on him. Now we ask him to stop turning his back on us. We are calling on Mayor Johnson's law department to drop the charges for the O'Hare 40 protesters and all protesters.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Do we want to, Mr. Clerk, respectfully, there was a name that was called earlier. You just want to try that name one more time. I believe it was the second speaker for, for inch.
Christian Urbano. Are you present?
All right, very well, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our, hold on a second, that's not how we conduct business here. You shout out again, you will be removed. Thank you. The public comment period of the portion of this meeting is, has concluded. We are now in the portion of the meeting for resolutions, but before we attend to those resolutions, we do have three aldermen that wish to make some quick acknowledgements, and so to ask that they be brief. The first is Alderman Desmond Yancy, who wishes to acknowledge Joan Gray, the president of South Shore's Montu Dance Theater. Chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take this time to acknowledge the late, great Joan Gray, founder of Montu Dance Theater. When we talk about art here in Chicago, especially Black art, it is important that we honor those who blaze so many trails. It's unfortunate that we lost our dear sister in March of this year, however spurred to action by Congressman Bobby Rush. It's just an honor to make sure that we acknowledge her daughter and friends and family who are in the audience today. Thank you.
Could they please stand so they can be acknowledged? Thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Alderman Yancy. Next, we have Alder Ramirez, who would like to acknowledge M&amp;G Graphics. It's a small business in the 12th ward. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Ramirez.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
City council members and guests, please help me give a warm welcome and applause to M&amp;G Graphics, who are celebrating 40 years in business in the city of Chicago. Since 1984, M&amp;G Graphics have thrived as a three-generation family-owned business. I want to recognize the founders, Robert and Josephine Meyer, who chose Brighton Park as their business's home 40 years ago. They have been entrusted in printing services for many Chicago institutions, like the Bulls, the Art Institute, and my favorite baseball team, the Chicago White Sox. Thank you, M&amp;G Graphics, wishing you all the many more years and many more family generations to come. Happy 40th anniversary.
Very good. Thank you very much, and I believe it's three generations, is that correct? But only two generations are here, though.
Right.
All right, very good. Congratulations again. Thank you, Alderwoman Ramirez. Now for Alderwoman Harris, we'd like to acknowledge Turian, AKA TC Cox. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
With leaving the body, I'd like to wait until later, after the committee reports, to allow him to get here, because I told him to come later, because I didn't know we were going to do it on a Friday.
All right, we got you, I promise you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll make sure. You're welcome. But we do have time to squeeze in two more, very quickly. The chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. I want to recognize a group of young people that have joined us at city council today and thank the efforts of UCAN and One Summer Chicago by, by providing youth opportunity in their communities. This tremendous group of, of youth have, have joined our ward office as summer interns, learning some of the aldermanic duties, both in our office and around the district. They've been doing a great job. I also want to recognize Irene Zamora with UCAN Chicago, and want to thank Cameron Kennedy and Marcos Torres, my ward staff, that have overseen their efforts over the past month as they learn how our great city works. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. This would be a good time to thank the city council for your investment in young people. It's a big part of, of my administration. Over 27,000 young people have summer jobs that also include working in our aldermanic offices, of which last year, 97% of them were Black and Brown. So thank you all again for being here. Thank you all for your collective work. And finally, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Good morning, everyone. I want to take this time to acknowledge the founding executive director, Jermaine Lawrence Anderson, and Pastor Anquay. They have come downhill with a group of young men. I am gentleman. Please stand up. And young lady. So I want to thank you for all the work you're doing with our young people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. There are a few alders that have arrived, I just want to make sure that the clerk records them as present. The following alders have arrived. Alder Coleman, Spazano, and Hall. Please add all three of them to the roll call. Alder Wagisback has arrived, please. Alder Gardner has arrived, so Coleman, Spazano, Hall, Wagisback, and Gardner, thank you all, will be added to the roll call vote. Now, thank you, all of you, for your recognitions. Today, we do have four resolutions. One commemorating the life and the legacy of our dear brother Cook County Commissioner Dennis Dear. We are also commemorating three Pilsen pillars, honoring Commissioner Kenneth J. Meyer on his retirement, and then finally honoring NASCAR for their contributions to the city. And I believe Julie Giesi is here. With that, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell for the temporary, for suspension So Alderman Mitchell is moving for the temporary suspension of the rules.
Mr. President, I move. I'm sorry about that, but.
You're okay.
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered, and of course, in the interest of time and respecting people's place who have been here early, we will forego the reading of the resolutions and go straight to the remarks. So the first resolution is honoring Cook County Commissioner Dennis Dear. Are there any alders who wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Definitely, I stand in support of this resolution. When someone has lived a life there, we was taught that people would preach their own home coin, and a man like Dennis Dear preached his own home coin. I'm going to be so short here, because he lived the life, and his work speaks for itself, and that's the bottom line. I often would try to find anybody that could outwork me, and Dennis Dear was one of those guys. It was about service, and that's what I appreciated most about him. But more than anything, and I told you all this, he loves his family. He showed us how to love his wife, how to love his children, and that is one of the best things a man, he was a man's man, and that's the bottom line. But he lived the life. He lived it. He, there's not a preacher, me, or anybody else can get up and say anything, because he, his life was his sermon, and I appreciate you all, and I'm going to keep, continue to keep you all in prayer. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I want to, Deborah, I want to tell you how sorry I am for your loss and, and the family. I want to thank you guys for lending Commissioner Dear to us. He was a great leader. He was a great leader. He led, he was a godly man that led with integrity. And I know we were talking the other day, and it was so heartfelt. I want you to know that whatever it is that you need, you can always give me a call, and the 18th will definitely be standing behind you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Proud to rise in support of this resolution, as someone who, even in my short time in office, had the opportunity to work with Commissioner Dear through our overlapping districts. Everything that everyone has said is true of him in spades, but I will say that he was also kind. He was so genuinely kind and joyful in his work, and those are such underestimated and undervalued and rarely seen values and traits in the work that we do. And I'm glad to have witnessed that in his life and in his work, so that I could take inspiration from it myself. Thank you so much, and he will be immeasurably missed. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Monique Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Dennis was not only a childhood friend, we went to college together, and he was also a neighbor, and also my Cook County Commissioner. To Dennis, to Barbara and the children, Melva, it's a hard act to follow, and he has his children to continue his legacy and the life that he shared with you guys. I mean, his love for his family was by far the greatest that anyone has. I mean, that's all he talked about, went, indeed, right on, my sister, I mean, just whatever he, he was so, he was always so proud of you all. And I just remember when you all were with me at the Park District as kids, and he would come and pick you up every after-school. I mean, I just, I sat in that same booth with you all when I lost my father, and to hear all the kind words that people share, just take it in and continue to, to, to live each day and remembering your father the way that he would want you to live your lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alderman Jason Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the family. Your father and husband was a unique public official. I'll say this, even during the challenges that he had, his commitment to his work was always there. The man never missed a meeting, always worked, and that's something that we may not find in anyone that I saw. And one thing that he did say, and it was very, we were in a West Side Black elected officials meeting one day, and he said, someone talked about having a piece of the pie, and he famously said, I don't want the pie. He said, I want the oven. And so I will. And so, I will always remember him about his tenacity, his fight for the West Side of Chicago, and what he did to make our lives better on the West Side. And he, too, was my commissioner as well. And he will definitely be missed by this body, but especially by all of those he advocated for in his role as Chair of Health and Human Relations over at the county. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alder Sixo Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would also like to rise in support of this resolution. Commissioner Dear also was, not only my commissioner, but a friend of our community and someone who really demonstrated the compassion and exemplified the care and dedication as a public servant to serve the most vulnerable. I tell you that I started my duties as elected official in 2019. He was one of the first elected officials who reached out and opened his heart and his advice to new people. So, I want to rise in support and recognize Commissioner Dear as a dear friend of our community, someone who exemplified dedication, compassion, and care for our communities. He loved the West Side, and I know that his legacy will live on with Barbara and his young children that continue a legacy of dedication, public service, and compassion for each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Emma Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I spoke with you earlier today about Commissioner Dear, from the time he taken office, everything that every Alderman have said, he lived. He wasn't just a human being. He was a servant. He was a servant for the people. He was a man of action. He had the faith of a mustard seed. He would call me at times, and he says, "Alderman Mitz, I need some advice. I'm new at this stuff. And if you could just help me to see the way through and out, share my opinion on the issue." And he would say, "Thank you." We've always had that relationship. He never wavered on what he believed in, his health care, his just helping peoples wherever he... wherever you needed him. I could call him anytime and say, "Anything with the county? I need your help." If I could say and sum him up, he was a one who loved his job, and he loved doing what he was supposed to do. And let me tell you, he was just born to do the work of serving folks. He was born to do that. He didn't miss a step in his Christianity, in his education, whether it was health care or was public safety. He was just that guy. And I told you, twins, Cannon and Caleb, you know, you are already demonstrating, following in his footsteps. He was very proud of his fraternity. He didn't have no doubt with pumping it up wherever you was at and showing his strength. And he will be missed, but his legacy live on because it's going to live on in each one of you. And you, too, would be to carry the torch to the next generation in your family, to implement him each and every day. You're going to walk by faith and not by sight. You're going to do the things that you know that is right to do. And you're going to say what you need to say. And I will continue to keep each and every one of you in my prayers as Chair of the West Side Black elected officials. Chairman Irvin mentioned he never missed a meeting. He always showed up, and he showed up with advice and willingness to work, willingness to help. And that's what it's all about, helping one another. So, thank you all for allowing us. And let me say to his sister back there, you know, I know he working very hard. I used to tell him that. But he's sort of like myself. We could work people because there's a need for work. We're not in these jobs to play. We're in here to take care of business. And it was all out of love. And you agree today that it was the love that he had. He made you better than what you were before. So, continue his legacy. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I did not give my condolences for a good man, a man of his word, a committed person. My condolences to Barbara and all the family. Dennis has left a great legacy. He was a leader in health care in the county side. And he didn't even just start when he became a commissioner. He was leading that before he even got appointed and elected. He always made his own road. He didn't wait for things to happen. He would make them happen, just like he did with June 10th. He didn't wait on anyone. He went on and initiated it. And it's celebrated all over the county now. And now, he done formed a new committee. And you know, he calls you up. He say, "Alderman, I'm doing this." I'm saying, "Oh, God, what is Dennis Dear doing now?" He always got something going on, trying to make a difference. And he don't let anything... He didn't let anything get in his way. He was determined, positive, and very innovator. He's going to be missed, but he has left his legacy embedded in all his family. And I know you all going to carry it on. Thank you for sharing him with us. God bless you all.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of honoring the life and legacy of Commissioner Dr. Dennis Dear. It is because of Dr. Dear I earn my West Side stripes. That's why I can talk about y'all because it was he who introduced me to the beauty of the 24th Ward and his wonderful family, to Sora, Barbara, to Trinity, to the boys. Melva, I know that this one has been hard as this is our second commissioner who has gained his wings and gone on to heaven. I'm often reminded of one of his sayings, which is, "I represent the West Side and the South Side, so no one gets left outside." And it's certainly that dearism that truly makes me appreciate being the little princess of the West Side by Way of Inglewood, to carry on and bridging the gap because certainly, we may live on different sides, but we don't want to be left outside. So, I'm so grateful to the Chicago Automatic Black Caucuses for making sure that we continue on the legacy of the South Side and the West Side. To Pastor Frank, it's so good to see you, Pastor Walton. Thank you so much, Trinity. I know it was just an honor. He loved that baby, Trini. And when you pledge Alpha Kappa Alpha, just know that your father will be in heaven barking and boys and twins as you are receiving more and more awards. And I know that one day, there will be an Omega Psi Phi scholarship named after your father. And I know you all are going to make sure that your fraternity will remember the life and legacy of Dr. Commissioner Dennis Dear. God bless you all.
Thank you, Alder Woman. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for bringing forth this resolution to Barbara and the family. First, I want to say that the service for Dennis was beautiful. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. But when I first met Dennis, I was, you know, having conversations with him because, of course, he lived on the West Side, but he served on the South Side. And I was like, "Well, you know, you can't put all your ducks and eggs in the West Side basket. We got to have some stuff on the South Side." And Dennis stayed true to that. He was wonderful to work with. He would call you. And when he was going through his health challenges, he used to say to me that he had a second chance at life. And I would say to him, you know, "Well, every day that we wake up, we should realize that we all have a second chance at life." And so, I'm very thankful for the life that he led. I would also want to acknowledge his great staff. He had great staff, Melva and David, always showing up, always being there, always supporting Commissioner Dear. I just want to say on behalf of the residents of the 3rd Ward, we appreciate his service. We appreciate what he did for our community. And we hope that the family... I know you're going through a grieving period now, but that peace will be coming forth soon. God bless you all, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Barbara, his daughter, to Dennis's daughter and twin sons. So, I got a number of opportunities to meet over the last couple of years. Pastor, to my good friend, 22nd Ward's very own Melva Brownlee. My heart is with all of you. My mind is with all of you. The 22nd Ward organization that was very fond of Dennis and very, very happy to partner with him is very saddened by his loss. A great man who we lost much too soon. You know, these... The fact that Dennis's office was so close to our ward there in North Lawndale, the fact that he prioritized both the South and West Sides in such an important way and was a crucial champion for black-brown unity in many ways. I can't say enough about an amazing human being who's gone way too soon. My heart really breaks on this one. And I just want you to know that our body is very much remembering Dennis in a very positive light. And I, for one, will always remember him and his great spirit, his love for his community, but most importantly, his love for his family. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Alderman Chris Taliaforo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I just want to express my condolences and thanks to Dennis's family. Thank you so much for his legacy and giving us to him or giving him to us. Dennis had a very, very big heart for the community. His passion and love for the West Side of Chicago extended way before he was elected. And I'm honored to be able to have stood beside him as he fought for the residents of the West Side. He will be tremendously missed. He was a giant on the West Side and always had a deep presence He was a giant on the West Side and always had a deep presence or a strong presence in his commitment for making sure that the lives of the residents on the West Side was better. And I think he accomplished that to a great degree. So I want to say my heart's with you. I pray for you and I thank you for the legacy that he leaves. And from the bottom of my heart, it was an honor to be a servant with him. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support. I met Commissioner Dear over 15 years ago as a wide-eyed recruit with the Cook County Sheriff's Department. He was one of my instructors. And two things that kind of struck me about him. One, his zest for life, but two, how he connected with the recruits. And it doesn't surprise me that he used that same connection to connect with his people on the 2nd District. So to his family, I send my condolences and his legacy will never be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I didn't know Commissioner Dear for very long. I'm pretty new to all of this. But being one of the first people that I met, he was so welcoming. You know, I think all too often, we don't really recognize how, what a mark somebody leaves on you. But as I sit here and I listen to the, the comments from people who have known him much longer, it strikes me what a, what an incredible heart he had. For service, he served my community, a small part of the ward, was included in his district. And we were, we were happy to be served by him. He also friended me on Facebook, which is, I'm gonna get to the story here, but he friended me on Facebook and I accepted. And sitting here listening to all of the stories of how, how much he loved his family, you saw that every day. So I, I was creeping on your family through Facebook. But you know, I feel like I've gotten to know all of you through how proud he was of all of your accomplishments. He will be sorely missed and I know that everybody will remember his legacy. And I hope that you, you take heart and solace in that. I'm truly sorry for your loss and he was very much gone too soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Very well, seeing no hands. Thank you to this entire body and your love and support, the Dear family. Mrs. Dear, to Caleb and Canaan, to Trinity, Melva, Pastor, thank you all for your presence today. All the words have been already articulated, so I will forego a speech. But what does come to mind is that his strength is perfect when our strength is gone. In fact, the Book of Nehemiah says that even though we grieve, the joy of the Lord is our strength. That is how Cook County Commissioner Dennis Dear lived each and every day of his life. The incredible contributions that he has made to society will outlive even the beat of his heart. But it will live through you. In fact, I will close with these words, what I'm so impressed by in this moment. Booker T. Washington, if you get a chance to read his book Up From Slavery, he said, "The difference between a white boy and a black boy is that a white boy knows his legacy where a black boy may not." You are fulfilling the hopes and aspirations of our ancestors because you know your legacy. And now it is your responsibility to live it out. And with that, I would ask for leave of this body to allow Mrs. Dear to speak. Do I have leave? Very well, Mrs. Dear.
Thank you. I don't know if, if this, should I stand?
Whatever you're comfortable with, we can hear you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to say thank you to the Honorable Mayor Brandon Johnson and to City Council for your kind words and your condolences on this morning. I stand before you in complete faith and, and in God's strength right now because we truly lost a giant. My husband, Commissioner Dennis Dear, I met him 34 years ago in high school when I was 15. We were high school sweethearts. We went to college together. We got married. And then after marriage, I went ahead and went to grad school. He followed me there. We had our first apartment there. I finished and then six years later, God blessed us with these three, our twin sons Caleb and Canaan, a two-for-one deal. And our beautiful daughter Trinity, who are now young adults. And Dennis is so proud of them right now. And I'm just so grateful for him. Our marriage lasted and our relationship and our strength because first, because we put God first. And we believed in communication and respect and love. And I think you, if you add that in every part of your life, whether it's personal, work, in every aspect, that you can make it in this world. With that, he was able to write so much beautiful legislation. And he was able to declare May Mental Health Awareness Month. He was able to declare June, Juneteenth Month. He was able to celebrate Juneteenth and make it a holiday, which he blessed and I'll say, gave me the helm to be the Executive Director of Juneteenth Illinois. And he's always made a difference, even before that, co-sponsoring legislation with Congressman Danny Davis with the Second Chance Act. So this is a great man. He always talked about celebrating his life. So right now, I just, I'm walking and our family is walking in God's comfort. And I just want to say, we're celebrating his life. Thank you for sharing your stories. They give me and my family comfort. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alderman. Alderman Mitchell.
I'm Mr. President, I move past to this resolution by rising vote.
Thank you, members. This passes. Very well, you may be seated as we prepare for the next resolution. We'll give the family an opportunity to leave the box. Our next resolution. Our next resolution is commemorating three Pilsen pillars. Okay, apologies. My script is out of order. This resolution is for the recognition and retirement of BACP Commissioner Ken Myers. Very well. Everyone is here now. Okay. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Michelle Harris.
Thank you. Ken's been around a long time. I have very fond memories of him my very first term here. As he was always the person that kept, they kept me in line. I remember a couple of times, he was like, what are you doing here? You're in the wrong place at the wrong time. I got you, Ken, I'm out this space. But I love Ken because he always did it in love. He always did it in caring. And he, he was super effective in what he did. Today, I couldn't be prouder of you to see you to become a Commissioner. I think it goes to who you are and the type of skillset that you possess. And so today, I am super sad about you leaving. At the same time, I know you gotta move on to another part of your life. And I think your mom will be super happy to have more of you around to do a little more things than you were doing yesterday. So I commend you. I thank you. I appreciate you for everything that you've done to help me to become a better Alderman. Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's hard to tell the story of a public servant who has gracefully and diligently served under four mayors. Mayor Richard M. Daley, Mayor Rahm Emanuel, Mary Lori, Mayor Lori Lightfoot, and now you, Mayor Brandon Johnson. It's hard to talk about a man whose reputation is that of excellence and execution. Ken never misses a detail, leaves no scenario unplayed, no problem unanticipated, and no stone unturned. And it's hard to think about the legacy of Commissioner Ken Meyer, but I'd like to share just for a brief moment, Mr. Mayor, a couple of stories about my friend. While working for Ken, I met some great people, truly too many to count. I reached out to a few of them to get some of their input for these remarks and my phone, my phone was flooded with messages and memories. From one colleague, I heard, one night, Ken and a colleague were working late and the phone rang. My colleague picked up the phone and the voice on the other end said, "Hey, Rich, it's Al Gore." The former Vice President of the United States knew that if he wanted to talk to Mayor Richard M. Daley, Ken Meyer was the person you had to talk to first. Of course, Ken got the Vice President and the mayor connected within minutes because that's the Ken Meyer way. Ken was a thoughtful and is a thoughtful problem solver who takes each assignment with the utmost seriousness, including putting together the old City Hall softball team. He treated that softball team like it was an extension of the mayor's political capital and was quick to remind the team, "You work for the mayor of the city of Chicago and we cannot be losing to those United States Senate staffers." It was very serious business. But Ken has always been the person you call when you need something done, done the right way and done quickly. He answers your call immediately and picks up on the first ring. And that's really hard to do when you have three landlines in your office. His dedication to the city is 24/7. Another colleague talked about how Ken and the late, great Tim Mitchell would get in the car after a storm or a blizzard and start driving around the city to assess the damage. You care so much and you always walk the walk and talk the talk. Another thing about Ken is that he treats every person he meets the same way. It doesn't matter who you are. It doesn't matter if you're an intern, you're an alderman, you're a governor, you're the President of the United States or you're a foreign dignitary. You know who I'm talking about. Ken will bring his A-game and you're expected to as well. And if you don't, you will quickly recognize it's time to step up and get on your level. The work has always mattered more to you than the titles or the accolades. You've seen it all through the good and bad. After 9/11, you were instrumental in organizing the citywide moment of silence. You knew the gravity of that situation and the importance of compassion and commemoration and sympathy. You also helped us celebrate the good times. The Sox winning the World Series, the opening of Millennium Park, which we did together, the victory of President Obama in '08, Blackhawks taking the Stanley Cup three times, Cubs winning the World Series, the list goes on and on, but you always had your hand in it. The saying goes that when you want something done right, you're supposed to do it yourself. But over the past 25 years in this city, the saying has been, when you want something done right, call Ken Meyer. Ken, you have given 100% of yourself to this city. Good luck and congratulations, my friend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman, Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Ken, nobody wants to say goodbye to you, right? In, in this role, I can tell you, in the short time that I've been on the council, you were absolutely one of the, one of the people who welcomed me and like was the first to assist me as an alderperson. And you know, your role at BACP was immeasurable in terms of just the, the involvement of your, you and your team making yourself available to answer questions and really bring me up to speed as a new alderperson, jumping in for somebody else. So you made my job that much easier, which I, I can't thank you for enough. You know, I unfortunately wasn't able to make your retirement party and was really bummed that I didn't get the opportunity to, to speak there. But I'm so glad I can do this on the record officially here on the floor of the City Council. You're a giant among men when it comes to the impact that you've had on this city. I think that you can be proud of all of the, the indelible marks that you've left on this city that makes Chicago Chicago. So thank you for your service. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. We will continue to call you for advice and counsel, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Bennett Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very happy to stand and salute my friend Ken Meyer, who I have known for nearly 20 years, actually. I'm pretty sure Daley had other LGBT liaisons, but it was Ken you went to for everything. And at, at a time when we didn't have equal rights in the state of Illinois, I was brand new at the city to have a very visible out gay man in the mayor's administration was huge. And it still is important, as we know visibility really is. I also was a little scared of Ken Meyer when I first met him. I probably am not the only one in the room. He knew his stuff. And if you, if you brought anything to him, you better know yours. And so I remember the first time I, I pushed back a little bit and he went, "Oh, I think you're right." And I've loved you ever since. I haven't been scared of you. I'm still a little scared, I'll be honest. I think about, I know your phone number, 744-1102. I don't know anyone else's phone number in the room, but I've known yours because you've had it the entire time I've known you. And it's been worth it. You've picked up right away and you've been such a great liaison for not just in the mayor's office or at buildings or business affairs, but the workings of this building and this city and how people work together in politics. And I really appreciate for you for that. I also bumped into you at O'Hare a few years ago with your mom going on vacation. And I was there with my mother going on vacation, the two of us. So I look forward to you two enjoying vacations together and me doing the same with my mother as we do as we all get out in years. So I want to congratulate you. Nicole Lee was probably the only one that wasn't at your retirement party. I think everyone else was there. It was great to see so many people that have really made an impact in this building that you were a mentor to. And so congrats to you on a well-deserved retirement, long service to the city. We'll have drinks to dinner on Halsted very soon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you for pushing him to change his phone number now. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, I remember when I first came in as Alderman on that 5th floor. But Mayor Daley may have been the mayor, but I thought you were because you kept me around through this building. And I was, I'd never been inside all, all back the back doors that you have, you know, trying to get down to the council, you and Sheila. So you moved from the 5th floor to BCAP. You ran the whole city. Every, every department, Mr. Mayor, I swear, he has way more knowledge than just BACP. Even though you ran it with the staff that you had smoothly and effective, you could have ran every department in this city because you had that knowledge and you have the wherewithal on how to get things done. And he didn't take nothing less but the best. Everything had to be perfect and in order. Even when you put together the Democratic Convention or back, it's been some years back now because I've been there 24 years. So when, when you went down there, you set up all the events. I'm like, wow, he got this kind of knowledge? He, he's somebody I need to know. But he's been very humble in serving as the Chairman for BCAP. He has a staff that respect him for the work that they do. They are very efficient and effective. Give them a task and they'll get it done. And I'm sure even your absent Ken, everyone is going to carry on just as you were still there. I'm glad you're able to now spend time with mom, though. I know sometime that you hate having to do things and she needed you at home. But now, as they say, you can spend that time at home. But I'm sure you're not going anywhere. You're gonna be around somewhere that as the Alderman Larson stated, you never changed your phone number. And even though you may have several other phones, but you still have that one number from the time that you came in. So we thank you for just being yourself, being, being a public servant, being very efficient in what you did and caring at the same time. There were, you didn't worry about who was what. If they wanted some advice, you gave it to them. And you gave it to them straight from the hip. So you, you didn't put no punches. Either you take it and you can move with it or you're gonna move on. So thank you so much for all your service that you've given to us and bless you in your retirement.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution. Couple of things, when I, thinking about my pastor, the late, great Reverend Dr. Clarence, he said, "It's always best to leave when people still want you" instead of having people pushing you out the door. And people still want you. People do not want you to go because of your service. Someone once asked me, "What do you think about Ken Meyer?" This was maybe, I think it was under the last administration. And the first word came to my mind, and it still is relevant, fair. Just fair. That's all I can say. He's fair. And that's what I appreciate about you. You, you're fair. And I think Alderman, I mean Samantha Nugent, Alderman Nugent just said it. I've seen you interact with many other people and I see people in different circles play favoritism and all that in front of your face, behind your back, whatever it is. I'm like, he's straight with everybody, the same way Jessica. You cannot ask for more fairness than that. And you did it with always the eye of service and making sure that Chicago was better, for the better, for the decisions that you made. But you also, what I've seen you do is with compassion as well. You know when to whip and when to pull back a little. And I, I saw that and I can't, and that's what I appreciate. That's fairness. And so I thank you for the service that you've given. I thank you for being helpful to me. I'm telling you, most commissioners, I would demand, I need your cell phone number. I need your cell phone number. Ask you for your number, you're giving me 744. Man, I need you, just call me there. Man, you're special. Don't nobody be picking up their work number all the time. You were doing that. I didn't need a cell. You were accessible. And for that, I appreciate. So thank you so much on behalf of the residents of the 17th Ward. Our some, many of our businesses are better because of the work that we've done. And I'mma continue to make sure that we push those things and things that I've learned from you so I can make sure whoever follow up behind you are working in that same, with that same passion, that same heart, and more importantly, that same fairness. Thank you so much and to your family. You all have, well, you raised a wonderful, a wonderful son. And they say, "You can tell the fruit by the tree, the tree by the fruit that it bears." I don't know you, but I know your son. That means you're even greater. So God bless you and you know, just enjoy, enjoy your retirement. All right.
Very well. Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Deborah Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution. Ken, you and I go back a ways. And I do have to admit, when I first met you, I was a little afraid of you too. But through the years, we have gotten to know each other a lot better and especially this last year as I've become the Licensed Chairman. Your guidance, your advice, your wisdom has just really made that so much easier for me. So I and my staff want to thank you and we want to wish you the very, very best of luck.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott Wagisback.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. President, thank you for bringing this to the council. Ken, I'll be brief. You know, we had a little tougher times back when I first started. We went through a lot of, I think, difficult situations where we had everything from things that were going on with IGA and working through them, like the parking meter deal and the Olympics and a lot of other things that I think you were instrumental in either moving forward or trying to work through those things. And I, I'd want to say, you know, they were tough times, but you were always fair in the way that you approached things with me and I, I do appreciate that. I always looked at you as a jack-of-all-trades and your matter-of-fact approach to things was always refreshing because it was basically, here, here's what we're doing and you know, take a position and go from there. So I do appreciate that and especially all your years of dedication and service to our city. I think often, a lot of people retire, they don't get the accolades that they should, but I am glad that we're here today to do that and appreciate all the time and effort that you put in to make this city a great place to live. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
President, when I think of Ken Meyer, I think of a class act. I believe I am the only daughter to a former Alderman and I thank you for taking me under your wing and then bringing on Chris Jessup to your team. And it is because of you where we were able to help good businesses, but also make sure that we held bad businesses accountable. Commissioner Meyer, it's because of you and your team we were able to even get the two businesses in Chicago Lawn and in Inglewood that are no longer there, that were just corners for crime, gangs, drugs. And it's because of your expertise and your keen protocol that we were able to make my neighborhood safer. So not only are you a class act, but you are consistent. And I know it is your consistency where you will not change your number for me. I don't know about anyone else, for me and Emily and Michelle. But I know that you are a phone call away. I am so excited that now you get to take your beautiful mother and enjoy life and get a tan, probably come back darker than me after your vacation, your well-needed vacation. Thank you for everything. Thank you for your years of services through four administrations. years of services through four administrations. They don't make them like you no more. But I certainly hope that there's another Ken Meyer in B A C P tucked away somewhere. God bless you and congratulations on fun retirement.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Alderman Walter Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also like to support this resolution. Ken, we go back almost 30 years, man. It's been a while. And, you know, you always consider you to have been the enforcer. See, a lot of people don't know you from when you were in the mayor's office. When you were in the mayor's office, you was the guy who told people what they didn't want to hear, but also told them what they had to do in order to make things right. You was the enforcer, man. And then you humbled yourself a lot more when you became commissioners and worked in the different departments. But Ken, whenever we needed something, we knew we can get it done with you. Because you would get it done. And I know that's why Mayor Daley had you in the office to do things for him. I remember several conventions, we had to get our tickets from you. Everybody wanted more tickets. And you would be the guy to say, no, you can't get no more tickets. I'm sorry. That's it. It's like, you already got yours. So they would always put you in the spot to be the guy to say no to everybody. But you would, but everyone would respect it because we knew you was doing your job. We knew you was loyal. And we knew you cared about whomever you were working for because you were loyal, very loyal to whomever you worked for, whether it was Daley, Rahm, Lori, and even this mayor. And I just want to thank you, Ken, for your public service, being in your capacity as commissioner. Anytime I would bring something to you, no matter what it was, you'd say, come on to my office. Let's see what we can do. You would try to figure out a way to make it work. You would try to make, try to find a way to make it work. I just want to say thank you. That's dedication. You always put in so many hours. I don't know what you're going to do with yourself being retired, man, because you're so used, your mom over there shaking her head, I could see her. Because you're so used to doing everything all the time, man. I look forward to seeing what you're going to do after this. And if you ever need my support for whatever you decide to do, I'm here for you, brother. Thank you very much for all your service to my ward and to the city of Chicago. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman. And we're looking forward to your updated headshot. The Chair recognizes Alderman Knudsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Ken, it's an honor to stand in support of you, my friend, my commissioner, and someone who's served and been committed to this city for quite a long time. As long as a few of us have been alive, you've been, you've been working hard. And what I would say is so special about your leadership, among many things, is a lot of people, a lot of leaders, when they approach retirement, maybe there's a slowdown period. But you've absolutely sprinted until the end. You're sprinting through the finish line. The energy is still so present that I can't wait to see what you continue to do for this city. One impact I want to touch on is the impact that you've had on everyone who you've worked with and everyone who has worked with you. I think that the dividends of your leadership and mentorship to people on your teams will pay on to this city for years to come. I mean, we talk a lot with your team. Chris Jessup is an incredible leader who you've really taught many things to. And I think a lot about my good friend, Deputy Mayor Kenya Merritt, who was on your team previously. There's so many names that exhibit this kind of leadership because they had a teacher like you who's direct, right? I think you've heard that from a lot of people today. We appreciate your directness and honesty. It helps us make faster decisions. So I just want to say thank you. Our friendship will, of course, continue from here. And maybe it'll even, you know, lighten up a little bit because we won't have to bring business into every single meeting. So thank you so much, Ken.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also am very proud to stand in association with this resolution. Second term we're now, but five years in, so still feeling very much a rookie. Whenever we'd have conversations with Ken, now I'm trying to get used to not just saying commissioner. I really want to thank you and commend you for the wealth of knowledge and understanding, not only of business, which obviously is in the name of the position, but our government itself works. When we have conversations with our constituents, it's not infrequent that we hear about how slow bureaucracies are in government, how they don't get things done. I don't think that's something that can ever be said about your leadership. I've been in business before being elected for over a decade. And I think that when you're in business, people may view how business people move as cold, dispassionate, only calculated. But I think there is not an understanding of the drive and passion it takes to accomplish something, to get it done, to go from point A to point B. So upon learning that you had the nickname Hurricane Ken at some point, I think it's absolutely fit, being that you are a force of nature, when you know there's something you need to accomplish. I can't thank you enough for that ability. But also, the forethought in understanding how government works and really picking the kind of administration and team that you've built, right? A good leader, especially in business, understands that there's going to come a day where you're not the one who's running the ship. And you have to make sure that everyone else is able to move forward on a mission without you there. And I think, looking at the leadership you have in the department, it speaks for itself. That doesn't diminish your leadership. If anything, it grows it out. And so I think everyone here, we really appreciate and appreciate you for being able to cultivate that level of talent, for having the trust to delegate and let your leaders be leaders as well. So although you are leaving us in good hands, I think a number of us will feel a little bit sadder, knowing that you're not here as someone whose counsel we value, even if it's not about business. But as everyone here knows, you're not going anywhere yet, right? Once, once this is over, there's the next role. And I think it's well deserved. I think you should spend time with your family. I think as someone who has the same kind of energy I do when we're trying to get stuff done, when you have the opportunity to actually take a break, I know it's the hardest thing for us to do because we're always trying to find the next thing to work on. I would say do appreciate it, to look back at everything you have accomplished term over term, and know that you, your leadership and your work, has made our city a better one. And so, I feel sad that I had board work so I couldn't be there for the retirement party. But I'm sure there's more parties to come. Send the advice, we'll be at a few of them. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ken Meyer, I hated you when I first got in office. I'm not going to lie. You, as in the vein of actually Walter Burnett, always had the know of an answer to whatever it is that you were looking to do. But let me tell you this. Through time, I understood why you had to say no. I understood that you were trying to organize and cajole to get everybody in this body together, which is a very daunting task. To say the least, it hasn't changed. It's probably gotten worse since you've been around. But nonetheless, you have always been one to try to find a solution to whatever the situation was at hand. In your role also as commissioner, I've always been able to count on you as someone that we can get a solution from, whereby in many cases, the answer apparently could have been no, but always tried to find a way to get to yes. But I definitely do not miss our first encounter. It's interesting, when I think this was, probably not many of us that served under Mayor Daley that are still here in council. I think, actually, I think I was the last one that came in. But during that time, though, man, you were rough, man. You were real rough, man. I just want you to know that. And I just had to get that off my chest. But congratulations. Godspeed. And I wish you the best in this next chapter of your life. But again, the city owes you a great debt for all the work that you've done and what you continue to do. I'm sure you're going to continue to offer your support and help to us in many ways, even though you may not be still Commissioner of Business Affairs. But I appreciate your service, appreciate your time, and thank you much. God bless.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazardo.
Has been said. I've been here through three administrations. You helped everybody out immensely. I know my one colleague said, no disrespect to him, said you are always fair to everybody. But I believe you were way more than fair. You went above and beyond helping people. You always have bent over backwards, always responsive. I didn't even have to leave a message for you. Most of the time, if you saw me on caller ID, you would call me back. So just appreciate all you did for this city, making it through once again, three administrations. That says a lot about you. So one heck of a going-away party, that's for sure. I mean, a lot of blast from the past there, I'm sure. Had to be 500 people there at least. So I just wish you the best. And thank you for all you did for the city and me. God bless you. And keep on going, buddy. Stay active. Thank you for everything. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Michael Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Presidents. Over the last couple of years, Ken, we've done a lot of work together, particularly in my role as workforce. And I got to say, it's been an absolute pleasure. You've delivered. The fact is, is that the Office of Labor Standards has grown and is more efficient and more effective at its work. I've seen it firsthand, and that's due to your leadership. The broader department has also really benefited from your leadership style. You're about bringing people in. You're about allowing others to flourish as well. Miguel Campos over there at OLS is one of those. And, you know, Ivan Capafeli, your first deputy, now taking over as insom is obviously another one of those. I just want to commend you for always looking back as well, not just looking forward, and bringing people with you in your administration, in your leadership. I've seen it firsthand. And I want to thank you for that work to our great city. I know it's not done, but very much want to thank you for that work and your partnership. It's been truly a good experience to work with you on real change that'll benefit our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Anthony Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Commissioner, I think you should relish in this moment, hearing what all of my colleagues have said about you. It's actually spot on. I'll make it extremely quick as possible. You set the tone in your department. You set the tone in every department that you've held in this city. But in this last department, that staff is just absolutely amazing and such a benefit to my ward and I know to my colleagues' ward. And it's because of the tone that you set. It's professional standards that you set. And it's just the, the concept that you bring to the office that, you know, find a way to get it done. It's always on behalf of the city of Chicago. I thank you for that. Thank you for all the help you've given us. And I'm sure my colleagues all feel the same way, too. Thank you, sir. Enjoy your retirement, please. Don't get three more jobs like everybody does when they retire. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ken, congratulations. What else can be said that our colleagues have not already stated? I just want to thank you for your service, your dedication, your countless hours, your willingness to solve problems, and your willingness to offer advice. As Alderman Moore had stated earlier, Mrs. Meyer, you raised a good man, a hard-working man. So you should be very proud. Unfortunately, I believe I'm the only person in this room who did not attend your retirement party. It's not because I didn't want to. It's because my wife Samantha reminded me that she knew you better and she's worked with you longer. So I took the kids to the water park that night. And I heard all about the party and the festivities. And by far, she had a much more entertaining night than I did at the water park. So on behalf of the 45th Ward, my staff, my family, we want to thank you for your service. And I know you well enough to know that you're not going to retire. So I wish you the very best on your next chapter.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Ken, I've just really appreciated working with you and your team. So I want to plus one everything that my colleagues have said about your leadership, about your team. And knowing all the years of service that you've given to the city, I hope a lot of our young people that are with us today are listening to this and maybe getting some ideas of what a career in public service can look like. So just appreciate the time, the energy, the effort, the knowledge that you've given to the residents of the city of Chicago, to our businesses, and from the 49th Ward. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alder Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this resolution. Ken, congratulations on your retirement. I know that over the years, we've had our disagreements, obviously, a lot of issues in the Central Business District. But when we disagreed, it was always respectfully. And despite those disagreements, I've always had a tremendous amount of respect for you and the job that you do. And especially, the dedication that you've had to the city of Chicago and the many mayors that you've served. I know that you're leaving a lot of headaches behind here. I'm probably one of your bigger ones. And I really do wish you well. And take that advice. Don't go right back to work. I know you've got a pretty aggressive vacation and travel schedule, and I'm jealous. So enjoy your time off. It's well deserved. And I know that Alderman Irvin mentioned that you've told him no many, many times over the years. He could have used a call this morning when he was getting ready for work. But maybe. So Ken, we're going to miss your fashion advice as well. And again, thank you, Mr. President. Good luck to you, Ken, and to you, Mrs. Myers. Congratulations on your son's great work. Sorry, Alderman Irvin. I'm just teasing.
Yeah, the Westsiders are feeling a way about that right now. I'm gonna let that one just sit for a minute. But don't think I'll forget that one. I got you. I'm gonna wait till after the meeting when the cameras are off.
Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this resolution. Probably one of the few people that knew Ken from the very beginning. And I will tell you, Ken, it's been an absolute pleasure. You know, you came in under Mayor Daley, and so did I. And you were one of the first people that I met to help me understand government and help me understand how to get things done. And so that was the attitude back then as far as city services, just get it done. And I do have a funny story that I just have to say about Ken. And, you know, when Ken is dedicated, driven, and focused, okay? And we all know that about him. When he's working on a project, he's going to be so focused on that project until he gets it done. Now, one of the few projects that I had with Ken's help, I thought he was my best friend. I mean, he makes you feel like, oh, man, he's calling you, getting everything done, getting everything done. I was like, man, this guy's great. But when Ken is done with you, he will walk right past you because he's focused on the next project. And so you become totally invisible to Ken when he's working on something. But that just goes to show how focused and dedicated he was in getting the job done. So Ken, I just want to personally thank you for everything that you have done to help me grow in my career and in my community. Is forever grateful for everything that you have done. You are a great public servant, and you deserve all your fruits and as you move forward. So congratulations, man, and the best of luck to you and the rest of your family on job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another guy with long, long history of institutional knowledge. Ken, you would definitely be missed. I want to thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for all answering the phone calls, especially, I love our B A C P Task Force team. Man, you guys definitely know how to shut down these pop-up parties. I want to thank you for, you know, coming out yourself, again, a wealth of knowledge. And you'll definitely be missed. And really, that's the only thing that I kind of hate about all of the people that has been here for a very long time. It's time for you guys to retire out with all the knowledge that you have. So sometimes just come on back, give us some of that knowledge to keep us going. Thank you so much for all that you've done. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for appointing him to be our commissioner. Great job. Thank you so much, Ken.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am extremely proud to stand in association with this resolution. You know, I met Commissioner Meyer about seven years ago, when we were envisioning what economic corridors can look like in Humboldt Park, when we were working on a state bill to build Puerto Rico town. And Ken came with all of his brilliance, like he always does. The expert in the room, the one that had the answers, the one with the experience, but the one humble enough to listen to your ideas and find ways for implementation. And when I became an Alder person, that was no different. Came in, first-year Alder, a real rookie trying to pass one fair wage. And Ken Meyer was the man who talked about all the pathways. And Ken Meyer was the man who talked about all the pathways, all of the possibilities, and made sure that when we passed that ordinance, that we also implemented it with fidelity and that the public understood the law and that workers understood the law. There are labor sectors across the City of Chicago, Commissioner, that are better because of a man like you. There are small businesses, small business owners, that are in a much better place than when they open their doors because of a man like you. And so I want to thank you for your contributions to this great city, our small businesses, our labor sector, and us as electeds are better because you. You know, I realize I don't even know what your voicemail sounds like because you never let me hear it. Every time I've called you, you've answered the phone. So it's been an extreme privilege to work with you. And I want to thank you because today you have all the people from different ideological perspectives and politics coming together just to celebrate one man. And that speaks volumes. You set a great tone for what the rest of this long day is going to look like. And so I appreciate all of the happiness you brought to council today, but to the entire city and for all of the decades of work that you put in. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. It's all uphill from here. Thank you, Alder Fuentes. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Gardner, you weren't the only one that missed the party. I'm sorry I missed your soiree, Ken. But I too wanted to rise and be associated with this resolution. I'm just being honest. When I first came into this body, you were the mean mug. You know, you were really hard to work with, man. And I grew to really understand you and to admire you. And as you moved into Business Affairs, I think like a fine wine, you aged well and you smiled more. So I appreciate that. I will say on behalf of the residents of my ward, our ward is better. We're in a better position today because of the work that you did at Business Affairs. As you know, we've had challenging issues. And you have always been the type of commissioner to find a win-win for the business and for the city. And I appreciate that perspective. So I wish you well in your retirement. I'm sure you're gonna smile a lot more now. And thank you for your service. God bless you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Matt O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support. Three administrations, multiple leadership roles. I actually knew Ken Meyer when I worked for my predecessor, Alderman Rugat. But as we've fought these last few years to support our small businesses through this rebound from the pandemic, even before you were Commissioner, you were extremely helpful to the small business community in the 19th Ward. Always appreciated your candor. You might not got the answer you wanted from Ken Meyer, but you got a straight answer. And I think we would all agree in this world we're in, it's sorely needed more. But always appreciate you just being a phone call away. And I think your department, you left a great hand. You have many strong leaders, some of whom are here with us today. And I look forward to working with Mr. Capofoli, has been just as communicative in his short period as you were. But I also think it's important to note to your family here, what a fine young man you have. And just on behalf of my community, thanks for everything. Wish you the best of luck in your next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. A rise in support of this resolution. Ken, one of the first lessons that I learned here was that you can count on Ken. And thank you for your progressive leadership. You know, the first step is to not close a business. That's the last step that we want to do. But then also the amazing seminars and webinars and seemingly unlimited resources that you provide to businesses as they work to execute their dreams and make our communities better. Ken, because we can count on you, Chicago has been better. And the 21st Ward says, thank you for that. Thank you for always answering the call, even if it's right after your birthday dinner, never taking a rest to get the job done. So so thankful that we can count on you. I will say I'm a little disappointed. It seems like everybody here has a special relationship with you. I thought I was special. But that just goes to the testament of your mother and all that she has poured into you. So thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Very well. I do want to acknowledge some of the people that are here with Commissioner Meyer today or former Commissioner. To the mother of Ken Meyer, Elaine Meyer, thank you for being here, Chuck Finn, Ivan, AJ, Jarrell Dawson, Max Budovic, Miguel, Miguel Campos, Jenny Cruz Garriga, Chris Jessup, and Elisa Sled Zinska. So thank you all for being with us today. This body has spoken very eloquently, sir, about your service and your dedication to the people of Chicago. We do thank you for your 30 years of leadership. Your commitment to Chicago is certainly evident because of all the roles that you've played, whether that was Department of Buildings, the Mayor's Office, and of course, the current position that you retired in. You have provided endless support for so many people, empowering local businesses to thrive and to grow. Your contribution to Chicago has been one that has been now distinguished as the most pro-worker city in the nation that happened under your leadership. We do appreciate contributions that you made, particularly during the time of the COVID-19 pandemic. It's a very contentious time, and your leadership was steady. But I'm especially grateful for the recent passages of pro-worker policies such as one fair wage and the paid time off policy. That's a big deal for the people of Chicago and for this country. And finally, your incredible service to this city is really one to be celebrated. And so with that, I would ask Alderman Mitchell for most passage of this resolution.
Mr. President, I move passage of this resolution in the end of this.
Hearing no objections. So ordered. Congratulations, Ken. The body, Ken Meyer's sister is here as well, and I do apologize, Ann Meyer. So she gets her own round of applause. Yep. Yeah. Take that, Ken. All right, we'll let you all settle as we bring in the third, which we have two more resolutions to get through. Thank you all for your extraordinary patience today. I believe the next resolution we do have is for the Pilsen Pillars Resolution. Is that correct? That's what I have. This should be enough time for Alderman Riley to change clothes as well. So give him another minute. How about we do this as the box gets settled? There will be a number of people that will have an opportunity to speak to this resolution. Again, this is the Pilsen Pillars Resolution. We have a number of special guests in the box today. As I get settled, I'll use this time to acknowledge those who are in the box today, 25th Ward community activists. It's a very powerful group, so Richard Gutierrez, Mary Jane Andrade, Judy Anne Villarreal, and then Lucia Villarreal, Valerie Santiago Esteban Tinoco, Octavia Ochoa, Anita Salgado, Maricela Tinoco, Consejo Rodriguez, Tanya Lozano Washington, Alan Washington Lozano, Jolene Lozano, Emma Lozano, and Brian Jackson Jr. I believe those are all the names that I have. All right, now that they're all settled, are there any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alder Sixo Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's a real honor and privilege to recognize a group of exemplary leaders in our community. As our late leader Rudy Lozano used to say, there's no one above anyone. There is extraordinary people doing great things in our community every day. So today I have the honor and privilege to recognize three pillars in our community. Unfortunately, we had a really tough year across the city, across the country, and not different in our community. So today we're going to recognize three important pillars in the Pilsen community that remind us the beauty of our community, but the importance of resiliency and the fight that still continues and the legacy that lives on despite the losses in our community. So the first leader that we'd like to recognize is our beloved Ms. Lucy Gutierrez. Ms. Lucy Gutierrez was the first Mexican-American woman that was a committee woman in the old First Ward. She was the first Mexican-American Latina that represented us in the DNC when it was really difficult for our community back in the 60s to even have representation. Her tremendous legacy as a fierce advocate, where she fought to make sure that we have a high school for our kids, fought to open Benito Juarez High School, to open up the Rudy Lozano Library, and more recently, he fought courageously to fight to keep our schools open. During the last round of school closures, all our schools remained open because of her fierce fight. She used to say, "The way that you take me out of Pilsen is on my coffin." And she fought courageously every day to be an example for the next generations to come. The next beautiful leader that we want to recognize today is our beautiful Micaela Ibarra. Miquita, as many remember her, Miquita is what we call La Abuelita de Pilsen, Pilsen's grandmother. Her tremendous love for the most vulnerable, when she served for decades, to either serve as a volunteer in the Province of God Sub-Kitchen, volunteering to cook at the Saprocopius Carmeneses, to help gather donations for the most vulnerable in the clothing store, and her commitment and bravery to help the most vulnerable, the poorest of the poor. And her commitment to continue to always look after the most vulnerable is an example of integrity, compassion, and love for one another. And finally, I have the honor and privilege to recognize our late and beloved Reverend Slim Coleman. Reverend Coleman was not only a mentor, he was a fierce advocate for working-class families and especially our undocumented community. Reverend Coleman worked alongside our beloved leader Rudy Lozano and fought courageously to build the coalition that finally elected in 1983 our first black mayor, Mayor Harold Washington. That legacy of coalition building, to fight for the most vulnerable, to fight for the undocumented, to fight for humanity, to fight to bring us together, it is today most relevant and more important than ever before. We recognize Reverend Coleman for his contributions to bring our communities together, working-class families, so that we identify the challenges to fight back against fascism and corporate greed. We are beloved and will remember all these great pillars in our community. We celebrate our community, one of the most beautiful communities across the country, a safe haven for many, a port of entry for immigrants and everyone across the city. Can see in our community the results and the seeds that these beautiful leaders have fought courageously to have a beautiful city, a beautiful community that continues to struggle, but is an example of integrity and resistance because of the wonderful work of these three pillars. Again, from our community to all of you, the family members, your legacy and their legacy lives on. We are grateful and thankful for the many contributions that your families have made to our community, and we're proud to celebrate with you today this important time to recognize those contributions today for the many generations to know and remember. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alder Sixo Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, there is a very symbiotic relationship between Pilsen and my lifelong home of La Vida, little village in 26th Street and 18th Streets. And there's been a lot of joint fights over the years. There's been a lot of joint struggle over the years. I don't know two of the three of the individuals here well. But I know of the legacy, struggle, the legacy of fight, the legacy of work. Another person I did know, Reverend Slim Coleman, he was a brother in the fight. He was someone that we worked with day in and day out. And, you know, Emma, his daughters, like, we've been at it for years, maybe symbiotically between our families and our friends. Sometimes it's together. But the fact is that the hard work of leadership in our communities very much does not get recognized. And I'm so glad that this leadership here today is being recognized. And I stand to support those efforts and to support the struggle and the many wins that have come from the Luchadores that are present here today and that have gone before us. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Are there any Alders, other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Very well. Seeing no hands. Thank you again for all those of you who have joined us on this wonderful afternoon now. I do stand with the entire body in support of this resolution. When I think about leadership, I think about the impact that leaders have, not just on their distinct community, but communities throughout the City of Chicago. It is really the essence of what I often refer to as the soul of Chicago. Lucia Gutierrez. and of course, to Reverend Walter Coleman, and to Missyella Ibarra. These leaders exemplify the strength of our city. Because the work that was done to fight for quality childcare, of course, education opportunities, that has led to the naming of a library after our wonderful union organizer and leader and politician, Rudy Lozano. You've touched so many communities through your volunteer work, and I do say volunteer. The work and the dedication that you all have done to set up soup kitchens, pantries, clothing donations. You imbibe the, 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 the most powerful spirit on the earth, and that's the spirit of love. Thank you so much for continuing your work as organizers and activists, and particularly at a very contentious time in our country's history. That is what true justice really calls for, is for active organizing and love for people. So with this entire body, we send, of course, our deepest condolences to the families of these three Pilsen Pillars, and we will never forget them. Their legacy obviously rings through in a very pronounced way. And so with that, I would ask that Alderwoman Harris provide a motion for the passage of this resolution.
Mr. President, I move this passage in the omnibus, sir.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you so much. Okay, is everyone okay? There's one more resolution. There's one more. Thank you to the family. As they exit the box, and we'll prepare for our final resolution of today. All right, our final resolution is honoring the NASCAR Street Race Resolution, and this is Julie Giesi, the president of NASCAR Chicago Street Race, should be here shortly. Must be pretty powerful where the box is occupied by just one person. All right, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
Yes, thank you. I, I rise in support of this resolution. I've, um, I've really come to learn a great deal about this international sport, NASCAR, and I'm very proud to see it here in Chicago. They really, they're a great corporate citizen, and they truly invest in every single neighborhood here in Chicago. They give back to the schools, they give back to the parks, and we really like continue, we really want to continue to see the work that they do, NASCAR. And I really got an opportunity to tour the footprint and to really see firsthand how much they invest in every single neighborhood in Chicago. Not only did I mention the neighborhoods, but also their great partnership that they have with the Chicago Public Schools and how they really push to, for the students to succeed, and, and, and that's what we need. We really need great partners here in the Chicago. Thank you for giving back to the city, and I look forward to seeing more of NASCAR next year. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also stand to be associated with the resolution. You know, when NASCAR was first thought of in the city of Chicago, thinking about having vehicles racing around downtown in a congested area, I thought, this, this is not going to be good. But as we saw other cities and countries, what they were doing, and the economic development that was being provided, I thought, let's give it a shot. Fortunately, two years in a row, the weather hasn't been very cooperative, but that, that hasn't stopped your organization from partaking in community events and participating, giving back to residents, residents of Chicago. So we thank you for your commitment to Chicago and looking forward to continuing to have NASCAR race around the city of Chicago. Congratulations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Monique Scott.
I too rise in support of this resolution. I just want to thank Julie for the work that you, um, the efforts that you made in North Lyndale, giving the kids in our community an experience with the Bubba Block Club Party. I thought that was awesome. The kids got to experience things that I didn't see, the putting the wheels together really quickly, and just the whole family environment that it just created in the community. Uh, thank you. I think that was very impactful, and that brings the uniqueness that Chicago offers to communities. We kind of bring, um, an experience into these neighborhoods that many sometimes don't like, but that's the unique part of Chicago about the experience that we experience culturally in our parks and around our streets. So, you know, thank you for allowing that experience in a community such as North Lyndale.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Pat Dow.
And then thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this, uh, resolution. I thought that this year's NASCAR Chicago race was a tremendous success. Um, I thought, Julie, from the addition of the children's play zone to the vendor marketplace to the fact that you included more African-American and Latino food vendors in the space, to even the mural of the seventy-seven communities, although I have to tell you, I spent a lot of time trying to find that statue of Bronzeville. We appreciate that you took that extra care. Um, and also to the two days of exciting racing that showcased the city's lakefront and Michigan Avenue. But I have come to understand that NASCAR is more than just a two-day race, you know, that you actually have deepened your commitment to Chicago, and it's evident by a lot of the reading that I've done about the kinds of investments you've made in the city of Chicago. Now, I could go through an entire list, but I won't. But I will say that you have already contributed and participated in about a hundred and fifty communities and neighborhoods in the city of Chicago with events. You have donated over $600,000 to local charitable events in the city, and we appreciate that. And the work that Alderman Tabarez mentioned in CPS with the STEM education and the STEM Fest that you did, we really, truly appreciate that. My own community has benefited from, uh, you know, working with Molleson School and some other schools in our community, and we want to just acknowledge that. And as you go forward, I hope that this will not be the last year. I know, I think you have one more year on your contract. We hope we have many more, but that you will continue to find ways to continue to deepen your commitment to the city of Chicago and to work with us so that the operations of the race go off without a hitch, and we promise you better weather. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I join my colleague and seatmate in rising in full support of this, uh, resolution, which enumerates quite a few points of involvement that NASCAR has, has done in the last couple of years, and I want to congratulate Julie and just comment on the fact that when you first arrived in Chicago, you were newcomers. You were strangers to many Chicago neighborhoods, had no experience with your sport, with your organization NASCAR, and you were told early on to correct that. You were told to introduce yourself to all seventy-seven neighborhoods in the city of Chicago, and don't just parachute in, but really come in and get involved and, and weave yourself into the fabric of the city. Well, you have done that, and you have done that in most impressive manner. You, you're not just checking the box here of community involvement. This goes so far beyond that. This goes so far beyond just good public relations, which it certainly is. The only explanation for that is this was done out of a sense of mission, out of a true experience of wanting to be partners, wanting to make a difference in our city, wanting to make improvements in these communities, and wanting to give kids who might not have the opportunity otherwise to open themselves up to a whole new world. You have done that, and you have so far exceeded the expectations that we set for you and we told you to get involved in the community and to pick those programs. And there's just a couple of them on here that are near and dear to my heart that I want to mention, All Kids Bike. We talked about that, uh, early on in my first meeting with you, Julie, and that's a big part of what you were doing. And After School Matters, uh, which is a program that is almost thirty years old now, started by one of the most beloved first ladies in the city of Chicago, Maggie Daley. And the fact that that program continues today and continues to make a life, a difference in the lives of the children of Chicago, and NASCAR found it and jumped right in with both feet, and it just warms my heart. Maggie would be very proud to see that happen today. So thank you, Julie, to your team, to the foundation, and to all your hard work in the city of Chicago. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Mr. President, I stand in full support of not just the race, but the race that was ran in neighborhoods, race ran in the lives of our young people. And I too want to say that the moment that we all saw on the weekend was only a snapshot in the postcard of the hard work and dedication of your team, and lives will be forever changed because of the access and the equity given. And so, uh, in addition to making Chicago an amazing weekend, you've taken other people to other cities and given them an opportunity to just ride the road with NASCAR. And so continue to make new roads and continue to win good races here in Chicago. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Julie, I just want to thank you for coming to communities that don't know you and introducing NASCAR to African-American communities across the city. Thank you for being an economic engine. My most favorite part, of course, was the After School Matters mural that the children did that was on display downtown. So thank you so much for that. And then, uh, again, going to the West Side to Douglas Park was simply amazing. Thank you, and I look forward to you being here way past next year.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support, Julie, thank you for the hard work you've done to touch all of our communities. I had the opportunity to participate in Daniels Amigos in Harrison Park, and seeing the community come out and really respond, react to what was going on at the park was definitely a treat for me. So thank you for the work you're doing, and we'll continue to do, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Jason Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to thank NASCAR and their team for the work they're doing with CPS, schools on the West Side, as well as bringing the, uh, Bubba Block Party to the West Side. Probably one of the first times we've had such an event, uh, like that with NASCAR in the community. One suggestion, though, I think that next time you set the race course up, you can charge admission to let some of us laypeople drive through it to get the feel of, uh, of, of NASCAR and what's happening, even though we do treat Lake Shore Drive as Speedway anyway, but, uh, we would, I think that would be helpful. And I, and it's good about promoting and marketing, uh, what's happening. And I think the broader appeal of NASCAR to get more people involved with it, just give us a shot on that course. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Uh, let me, uh, give kudos to Chairman Dow for bringing this resolution, uh, to the floor today. The city of Chicago, um, as you mentioned, a leadership. Um, in today's council, we've recognized the late Commissioner Dennis Dear. Uh, we've also, uh, recognized Commissioner Ken Meyer. And today, we're adding another addition, um, and that's Julie, uh, to the team of public servants that have given back to the city of Chicago. NASCAR, uh, for many of us, was a headache, uh, when it first started. Uh, and Julie and her team, um, have continued to, uh, make adjustments and also to give back, uh, to, uh, all of the communities, uh, that represent the city of Chicago. And I want to give, uh, Julie and her team a big, big, big thank you. Also, its commitment to youth. My ward will benefit from NASCAR and their support of an event that I will be having to support our youth across the city of Chicago as relates to violence. Today, uh, I have fourteen interns that are in the body today that I also want to recognize. And it is really important that they're there to see the leadership of, again, Commissioner Dear, Commissioner Meyer, and as well as Julie at NASCAR. And so again, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and we need to, uh, really push on our other corporate citizens to do more in the city of Chicago. It certainly takes a village for us to be able to move our great city. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity.
Very well. Thank you, Alderman Robinson. Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I also rise in support of this resolution, and I think everyone here knows that I was a pretty harsh critic of NASCAR when they first came to Chicago. I think it's important to remember that the real issue there was, uh, how they were introduced to all of us by the last administration, um, and that it was a deal signed really without, uh, our advice and consent. So I would say that unfortunately for NASCAR, they started out with a PR deficit thanks to the last administration. But everything that I've seen out of NASCAR since has been very impressive. Obviously, it's a big event. It takes up a big chunk of the city's front yard. But as Alderman Hopkins and others have mentioned, NASCAR, I think very genuinely, dove in headfirst to build real relationships, um, not just with downtown Chicago and its business community and residents, but also in the neighborhoods. And I think many of my colleagues have talked about the meaningful investments and the relationship building that's occurred there, and especially with a focus on youth. And so I want to thank Julie and her team for, uh, proving up their commitments, frankly. When they first came in, many of us were skeptical. This was an organization none of us had worked with before, uh, and they made a lot of promises. And I think some of us were curious to see whether or not those would play out. And to their credit, NASCAR has not just delivered on those promises, but over-delivered. And I think a lot of that credit goes to Julie and the broader NASCAR team. So, um, on behalf of the Forty-Second Ward, uh, in a grateful city, thank you for making those important community investments and signaling your commitment to the people of Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Uh, I just think it's important to note that NASCAR's investments in communities across our city, particularly on the South and West sides, uh, that are in need, uh, is much appreciated, and hopefully we can, uh, continue that partnership. I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Very well. We, as a city, Julie, deeply appreciate NASCAR's commitment to investing in Chicago. This event certainly contributes to the growing story of Chicago as a true sports town. You have provided our city with an incredible opportunity to showcase its beauty. The NASCAR Street Race is especially an important opportunity for local businesses, commercial corridors, hospitality industry. All of that has been revitalized because of the presence of NASCAR and all of their fans. You brought this race to life. You brought this race to life. You have used this as an opportunity to uplift people and neighborhoods. So, we thank you for that. Has been expressed and articulated over 150 community events, partnered with our sister agencies and our departments. You did something that was very important to me, particularly in your investment in young people, that is, I believe, our pathway to a better, stronger, safer Chicago, and you contributed to that. But you also partnered with Chicago Animal Care and Control to support pet adoptions, one that doesn't get a lot of attention. But through this work, you have made sure that you've contributed to communities and the people throughout planning and hosting this historic street race, and as Alderman Riley said, working deeper, as well as Hopkins, to coordinate and work with the people. That means a lot to us. That is who we are as a city. So, congratulations, and we're looking forward to all of our prayers that this will become even a more effective display of this sport, and that heaven will shine upon us for both days. Thank you, Julie. And with that, Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to the passage of this resolution.
Mr. President, I move past it as a resolution in the honor of...
Hearing no objections. So ordered. Congratulations, NASCAR, Julie. Alderman Mitchell, before we go back to the regular order of business, there was a moment that we missed a little bit earlier. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Torian Cox, who was a former Sergeant-at-Arms, kind of left in a hurry because he got approved to go to the Police Department, Fire Department, I'm so sorry. Fire, oh, I'm bad. Freudian slip. Fire Department. And so, one, I want to say congratulations on his recent graduate, not, he hasn't graduated yet, but the recent, passed all his local tests. He still has the state test to take, so, but I want to say thank you to my colleague, Nick Spazato, who has been instrumental and a very good friend of Torian throughout this whole process, and even when he left, one of the better dispositions in the Sergeant-at-Arms office, not easily pushed across the edge. So, I want to thank you, Torian, for always being that smiling face every day, when you come in to greet people here, and how well you work with people, and particularly the Alderman down here. And I thank you for your service and congratulate you as you have moved on to your next part. Your family's here. I don't know if you knew that, that they were coming down. All surprise, all surprise. But Torian, thank you again for your service here. And I want to again thank and acknowledge Alderman Nick Spazato, who has been also on this resolution for you.
Very well. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I join in congratulating Torian on a well-deserved promotion. And also, Mr. President, I want to acknowledge another matter on the agreed calendar. There's a memorial resolution in honor of Ann Lurie. I do not wish to read it. I just want to comment on it. Ann, of course, was the lead donor behind Lurie Children's Hospital, a beloved institution in the city of Chicago. Her benevolence, her philanthropy, and her charity is simply unsurpassed, and I just didn't want to let this moment pass without asking for a moment of silence in her memory.
Thank you for that, Alderman Hopkins. Let's have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to our dear friend and brother, Hero Torian? Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this great day. I walked in the office and saw you in that uniform. It brought back some incredible memories, some very scary, but yet some more positive than anything else. I took my test in 1995, and I didn't get called until 2005 to join the Chicago Fire Department. I previously been on the Chicago Police Department, and my entire family was police officers. And I had a hard time deciding whether to go or not. And my entire family called me into one room and sat me down, and I thought I was there for some sort of intervention of something I didn't know that I did. But they all sat me down, and they knew I was having a hard time crossing over. Then my father looked at me at time, 31 years as a Chicago Police Officer, he turned to me and said, "You're not going to walk to the fire academy. You're going to run the fire academy. You don't have a choice. You're going." And it was by far one of the greatest decisions I've ever made. Learn everything you possibly can. Enjoy every minute of it. Know when that bell rings that you're going to save someone's life, and I guarantee you're not going to care who it is. You're going to go there with love in your heart and everything you learned in your mind, and you're going to try to do it better than everyone else. That is an honor to wear that uniform. It's a privilege to wear that uniform, and you are going to feel by far like one of the greatest people in the city of Chicago, because you're going to be a Chicago fireman when this is all over and done with. Chicago firefighter, couldn't be more proud of you. I'd love to put the uniform back on again. I'm extremely fat now, and it won't fit me. I'd have to put my belt on with a boomerang, but I'm so proud of you. I wish I can go back and have that moment again. Embrace it. God bless you. Go get them. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is a little premature, because Torian still has a few more months to go, and I know you have a very big test coming up next week for the state final. And it's very important that you buckle down and study for that. That is the most important part, as you know, to get over to the fireside. So, alls I could say is the 14 years that I spent on the Fire Department, by far, is the best job I ever had in my life. Some of the men and women that I've come across, they are the best people that I've ever met, and they are the best extended family that I've ever been a part of, and I know that you will have the same experience as well. It's a brotherhood or sisterhood, or however you want to phrase that, that is not like anything else that I have ever experienced. And I know Alderman Napolitano and Alderman Spazato would say the same. So, find a mentor, find somebody who knows what they're doing. Find somebody who has a few years under their belt, who's been on busy companies, because just as great of a job it is, it's equally dangerous as well. And it's very important for you to know what to do and when to do that and take orders. So, don't ever forget that, and when it's your time, you'll give that back to the next candidate that's coming on. Before you know it, it'll be 20 years, just like that, and it'll go in a blink of an eye. So, congrats to you. Study hard, and best of luck.
Very well. Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Thank you too. Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand to say thank you, Tori. You put out some fires here, literally, and whether it's at Pier 31 or down in City Hall, you've been consistent. And so, may the wind be behind you, may you continue to evolve, and God bless you, man.
Very well. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this recognition? Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President, Torian. Thank you so much for taking on this task. I'm very, very excited, and I'm proud of you, especially to see you wanting to go into the life of being a first responder. Only thing I ask is that when you get there and you get well-experienced, make sure you get into a company that does a ton of fires, you know, because that's where all the training and the hard work really is. Reach back for somebody else and bring them right on along with you. Good luck with you guys. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this recognition? With that, for the close, the Chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazato.
Thank you, Mr. President. Torian, touched a lot of lives the short time we all worked with you. We appreciate you. We just felt the need to bring you back. Kind of when you left, it was kind of really quick and didn't leave the way Alderwoman Harris and myself wanted to see you to go. So, made a phone call, bring you back today, kind of surprised you bring your lovely family here. So, like my colleague said, it's a life-changing job. Just the adrenaline get flowing, just helping people, and you've helped people in a different way, just like Alderman Hall said, put out a different kind of fire over here. Well, it's going to be a totally different experience, but you're going to love the job. You're going to make friends for life, like I told you. Just bear down, stay the course. If we could do it, you could do it. So, just best wishes to you, and look forward to having you back a year from now and letting everybody know what this job is really about and what the brave men and women of this department are all about. So, best wishes to you. I know my one colleague has got you promoted already, but he didn't get promoted yet. He's just in the academy. So, hopefully, a few years from now, not, you know, maybe you come here one day and you're promoted, or who knows, maybe 10, 12, 15 years from now, you could be a Nick Spazato, an Alderman Napolitano, or a Gardner. You may want to come back to this job. So, but best wishes to you. I'm so happy for you. Once again, it's a life-changing job, and thank you, Mr. President.
You are welcome. Thank you very much. Oh, wow, we just closed it out, but we're going to... Alderman Spazato, is that okay? All right. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
I appreciate the grace, Alderman Spazato, Mr. President. So glad I didn't miss the opportunity to welcome you back, Torian. It's so great to see you. We couldn't be more proud of you. I don't know that I'd wish coming back here on you, though. No, in all seriousness, when you left us, you know, you left some big shoes to fill, and we know that, we all knew, and we know what you're going to contribute as a member of the Chicago Fire Department. So, I thank you for your service, all of your service, and every, all of the great things that you're going to be doing in the future. I wish you well. Good luck.
Very well. Torian TC Cox, congratulations, sir, to his family. Let's give them a round of applause. All right. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Very well. Hearing no objections. So ordered. Next up, Communications.
Communications from its Honorable the Mayor to the Honorable the City Council of City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Comptroller I transmit here with the ordinance establishing the Chicago Public Banking Initiative Pilot Program. Favorable considerations for resolution will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the Fourth Amendment to the Pillson-Tiff redevelopment project and plan. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Legend South A3 Affordable Housing Project. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a Tiff redevelopment agreement with Oak and Layer B LLC for affordable housing development. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Care Manor Affordable Housing Project. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the MHL2 Prairie District Apartments Project. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the MHL3 Prairie District Apartments Project. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide Tiff funds for improvement at Kells Park. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request of the Commissioner of Aviation I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of amended cargo facility leases with Aero Chicago LLC. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Aviation I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of lease agreements for office space with the United States Cellar Corporation and FCA Partners LLC. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Aviation. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code Regarding to the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund Program. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Plant Chicago NFP to provide Neighborhood Opportunity Fund. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Budget Director I transmit here with the Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of professional services agreements with Urban Land Institute. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance amending Chapter 2-45 of the Municipal Code Regarding Favorable Tax Incentives. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with ordinance authorizing favorable tax incentives for specified properties within the city. Your favorable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code to provide a loan restructuring authority to the Commissioner of Housing. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the execution of long-term modification agreements. Your favorable consideration, these ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned land to adjacent neighbors. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties located at 628-658 East 134th Place and 621/641 East 134th Street to neighbor space. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned parcels for open space purposes. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Housing I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of property sale and transfer agreement with CHASSA Phoenix House LLC. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Public Health I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an access agreement with the owner of the property located at intersection of East 126th Place and South Avenue O. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of open space impact fees for various open space projects within the city. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Transportation I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing acquisition of properties located at 4801 West Argyle Street and 4801 West Ansley Street for a road improvement project. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance exempting public and civic uses from the dynamic image sign criteria. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landlords and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Marlin E. Everett as the Commissioner of the Chicago Park District for a term effective immediately and expiring April 25, 2030. Such period allocated as follows, a term effective immediately, but not earlier than September 11, 2024, and expiring April 25, 2025, to fill a vacancy by completing the unexpired term of Jose Munoz, who has resigned, followed immediately by a full five-year term. Your favorable consideration, this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration, these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here appointments to the Chicago Housing Authority Board. Your favorable consideration, these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. I City Clerk Anna Valenci hereby inform the City Council... I city clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the city council with the following documents filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Executive Order number twenty-two-four dash one regarding black reparations agenda determination certificate regarding city of Chicago's revolving line of credit, both Wells Fargo Bank National Association aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five million. Certificate of city's funding requirement for retirement board employees annuity and benefit fund of Chicago for tax levy year twenty-twenty-five, payment year twenty-twenty-six. Designation of Tahita L. Hinton as additional proxy to affix signature of mayor to certain documents and revocation of proxy destination, destination of Aileen Valaquest. Office of Inspector General's recommendations to reopen Chicago Police Department misconduct investigation log number twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-zero four-nine-three-five. Office Inspector General Advisory Regarding Chicago Police Department Member of Affiliation with Anti-Government and Extremist Groups. Office Inspector General Second Quarter Report of Investigations for Year Twenty-Twenty-Four and expressions of opposition to propose zoning reclassification of property at thirty-six twenty-seven dash thirty-six thirty-three North Sheffield Avenue. I city clerk Valencia also inform the city council that all those matters which were considered by the city council at the regular meeting held on June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four to require by statute can be published and to be published in full or pamphlet form when one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the city council city of Chicago. Issuance of the second lien water revenue bond series twenty-twenty-four. I city clerk Anna Valencia also inform the city council the ordinance authorizing the issuance of city Chicago's second lien water revenue bond series twenty-twenty-four, which was passed by the city council at the regular meeting held on June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four to request to be published in special pamphlet form, was it published in special pamphlet on June seventeen, twenty-twenty-four. I city clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring city council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas to refer to committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Claims against the city of Chicago to refer to committee on finance. Amendment of Tile Seventeen of Municipal Code by reclassification of an area shown on map number thirteen dash L at forty-eight thirty-five to forty-eight forty-one North Lips Avenue, which is referred to committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Recommendation by commission on Chicago landmarks for designation of Jackson Storage and Van Company Warehouse at thirty-six oh nine dash thirty-six eleven West Surmac Road as a Chicago landmark, which is referred to committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Recommendation, recommendation by commission on Chicago landmarks for designation of Remova Theater Building at thirty-five oh eight thirty-five eighteen South Halsted Street, Chicago landmark, which is referred to committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. A recommendation by commissioner of Chicago landmarks for designation of Saint Albart Parish Complex at sixteen twenty-two dash sixteen fifty-eight West Seventeenth Street and sixteen thirty-three to sixteen fifty-nine West Sixteenth Street, the Chicago landmark, which is referred to committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Your honor, that concludes the reports and communications from mayor and other city officers.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please add Alder Carlos Ramirez Rosa, Rosa to the quorum roll call as well as Alderwoman Monique Scott has requested to participate in the remaining of today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule Fifty-Nine. I believe she has since logged on. Can I get a motion to approve her remote participation? All those in favor of Alderwoman Scott's remote participation, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Committee reports. Our first committee is a committee on finance. The chair recognizes Chair Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council. Reporting for the city council's committee on finance, which held a committee meeting on July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four and a subcommittee on revenue meeting on June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. The following items received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of tax increment financing funds for improvements at Jose de Diego Elementary Community Academy at twenty-three oh one West Potomac Avenue in the first ward in an amount not to exceed one point four million. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Very well. Seeing no hands, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device to submit your vote. The voting is now open. All right. I will now call on those who have not voted using the e-device. Alderperson Robinson. Alderperson Robinson. All right. Alderperson Gutierrez.
Yes.
Alderperson Gutierrez is a yes. Alderperson Curtis. Not in chambers. Alderperson O'Shea. Oh, I got yours. Alderperson Taylor.
Yes.
Alderperson Taylor is a yes. Alderperson Scott.
Yes.
Alderperson Scott is a yes. Alderperson Burnett. Alderperson Burnett.
Yes.
Alderperson Burnett is a yes. Alderperson Cruz. Not in chambers. Alderperson Clay.
Yes.
Alderperson Clay is a yes.
Madam Clerk, Robinson is a yes.
Alderperson Robinson is a yes. Okay. Anyone else need to vote? All those that voted who wish. Yes, we are changing Alderperson Clay. So you can see we are changing you from absent. We're just having a technical glitch real quick, but we're gonna mark you. There it goes. Okay. All right. We are now closing the vote.
Very well. Thank you. There are forty-seven yays and zero nays. This matter has passed. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider the vote, Mr. President?
All those in favor of reconsidering this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chair Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance amending chapter sixteen dash fourteen of the, of the municipal code regarding neighborhood opportunity funds. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a resolution concerning the authorization of the Chicago Department of Housing to submit application for the community development block grant coronavirus urban shelter program issued by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four and five consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the city of Chicago and the denial of payment of various small claims against the city of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number six are proposed orders authorizing charitable solicitation on the public way tag day permits for the Illinois State Council Knights of Columbus Charities, the National Autobounds Society, Inc., American Civil Liberties Union, Inc., and Planned Parenthood Federation of America, Inc. These will be placed on file with the city clerk. Item number seven is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, and settlements were entered into for the month of June twenty-twenty-four. This too will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number eight A is an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Melissa Nigera, Special Representative for the deceased plaintiff Alfonso Paul Cazares versus the City of Chicago et al. in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight B is an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Mary Redding as special administrator of this, of the estate of Dana Hubbard, deceased versus city of Chicago et al. in the amount of two point five million dollars. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Alderman Quinn, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Very well. Decided. Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number eight D is an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Livingston et al. versus city of Chicago and Griffin versus city of Chicago in the amount of eleven point two-five million. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report with the exception of Alderman Spazato, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Hearing no other objections, so ordered.
The following item received a do not pass recommendation at committee. Item number eight C, an order authorizing corporation counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Velez versus city of Chicago et al. in the amount of seven point six million dollars. The Subcommittee on Revenue also met on June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four and discussed city revenue. No votes were taken. Mr. President, that concludes my report from the committee on finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee is a committee on budget and government operations. The chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the city council reporting for the committee on budget and government operations with a held a meeting on July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. The committee has a series of reports and recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation ordinance year twenty-twenty-four amendment within Fund nine-two-five. I move passage by the first favorable roll call of the committee on finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a transfer within committee on health and human relations for year twenty-twenty-four. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no one, so ordered.
Item number three is a transfer of funds within the fifteenth and forty-ninth wards wage allowance and automatic expense account for year twenty-twenty-four. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report. And the gentleman from the forty-second ward, wish he could be this fly.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next committee is committee on aviation. The chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea, Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your committee on aviation, which a meeting was held on Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Committee has one report recommending passage of the following item. Ordinance two-zero-two-four zero-zero-one zero-one-three-zero. This ordinance approves the concession lease and license agreement at Chicago O'Hare International Airport for individual leasing and licensing with High Flying Food, High Park Hospitality, Sanchez Carina, T-five LLC concession error. Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance and associated unsuccessful motion reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next committee is the committee on committees and rules. The chair recognizes Chair Harris.
Mr. President, reporting for your committee on committees and rules, which met Monday, July eighth, twenty-twenty-four, ten a.m. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Items one through four are corrections of the city council journal, journal of proceedings for December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three and pamphlets issued April nineteenth and the twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-four. Items one, two, three, and four received a due pass recommendation. Mr. President, I move passage of the most of these items by the most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very well. Thank you, Chairwoman. The next committee is the committee on economic capital and technology development. The chair recognizes Chair Villegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the city council reporting for the committee on economic capital and technology development, which met on Tuesday, July ninth. Committee held a meeting and recommend passage of the following items. Items one through three on the report are a series of reappointments to various special service areas. One and two, reappointment of Carlton F. Daniels Metz and Kirby J. Kaiser to SSA number eighteen. Reappointment of Duke Migland to SSA number seventy-five, Oak Street Commission. I move for passage of this reappointments by the first favorable roll call of the committee on finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items four, three, eleven are a series of tax incentives. Item four on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a class six B tax incentive for the property at fifty-two oh one West Grand Avenue in the thirty-seventh ward. Item five on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a class six B tax incentive for the property at ninety-one sixty-five South Harbor Avenue in the tenth ward. Item six on the report is an ordinance to approve issuance of a class seven A tax incentive for property at fifty-one hundred South Damon Avenue in the sixteenth ward. Item seven on the report is an ordinance to approve issuance of a class six B tax incentive for property at twenty-eight forty-one South Ashland in the twelfth ward. Item eight on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a class six B tax incentive for property at sixteen twenty-one to sixteen twenty-five West Carroll Avenue in the twenty-seventh ward. Item nine on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a class six B tax incentive for property at forty-five hundred West Chicago Avenue in the thirty-seventh ward. Item ten on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a class six B S R tax incentive for property at forty-five thirty-three and forty-five forty-five West Augusta Boulevard in the thirty-seventh ward. Item eleven on the report is an ordinance to approve the issuance of a class six B tax incentive for property at one-two-five-two-five South Karen Delette Avenue, twenty-nine twenty-four East one-twenty-sixth Street, one-two-three-five South Karen Delette Avenue and one-two-three-five-nine South Burley Avenue, the tenth ward. I move for passage of the, all these tax incentive items by the first favorable roll call vote of committee on finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well. Thank you. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item twelve on the report is a substitute resolution to approve a call for a subject matter hearing on the potential for and benefits of employee ownership enterprises throughout the city of Chicago. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of committee on finances and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. The next committee is the committee on health and human relations. The chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez Sanchez.
Reporting for the committee.
Pardon me. Chair Rodriguez Sanchez.
Reporting for the committee on health and human relations, which met on July twelfth of twenty-twenty-four at eleven a.m. The committee considered two ordinances, the first item being SO twenty-twenty-four zero-zero-zero-seven-eight-four-one, which is an amendment of municipal code section seven twenty-eight seven-ten by prohibiting accumulation or dumping of garbage, food, food trash, food stops, vegetation, dead animals, or waste of any kind in any building, land, or waterway. This item received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the committee on finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The second item was SO twenty-twenty-four zero-zero-zero-eight-nine-three-nine, which is a new municipal code section eight four zero-eight-three prohibiting threatening material placed or affixed on private property to induce intimidation or defamation, whether characterized as a hate crime, hate incident, or intimidation, punishable for each violation by fine or criminal prosecution. This item received a due pass recommendation from the committee and I would like to call on Alderman Knutson to speak on this item.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Chair. The chair recognizes Alderman Knutson.
Testing, testing. My speaker just broke. Thank you, Chair. And today I'm asking for full council support on the Stop Hate Littering Ordinance. On a Monday morning this past spring, a forty-third ward resident and her child came to our office first thing in the morning, holding a Ziploc bag. Inside the Ziploc bag was a blatantly anti-Semitic flyer and pellets that had the appearance of being rat poison. The neighbor told us that cars on their residential streets were covered with these flyers. Our local police jumped right on the case and found over eighty of such flyers in the area, which has a high Jewish population. This was weeks after similar flyers appeared on the other side of our ward and during a time they started to appear in other wards. The next day, we did our own positive flyering with the Chicago Commission. The next day, we did our own positive flier-ing with the Chicago Commission on Human Relations with materials on their Stop Hate initiatives. Through briefings with C P D and other subject, subject matter groups, we quickly identified the group that spread these flyers. It's a white supremacist hate group based out of Florida with local operations in several states. I'm not going to name the group as their structure relies on notoriety in order to monetize their hate. We knew who they were, but we had one big problem. Our local law enforcement informed us that under the current law, there was nothing that they could do. They couldn't give the group a warning, they definitely couldn't write a ticket. No justice and no reason for this hate group to not return to all of our wards. That frustrating reality brought us into, into brainstorm mode with our partners in this ordinance, Commissioner Andrade's team at the Commission on Human Relations. We learned through the Southern Law Poverty Center that over twenty six thousand incidents of hate flier-ing have occurred in the U S since twenty eighteen. This hate flier-ing trend is nationwide, but there's plenty examples in Chicago, and I just want to name just a few. In June twenty eighteen, stickers with swastikas and phrases like refugees not welcome here and Nordic white boys were posted in Logan Square with, with razor blades hidden behind the posters. In June twenty twenty, Black Lives Matter signs and posters were defaced and stolen in North Center, and racist flyers were put on properties that had B L M signs. Last year and in twenty sixteen, flyers threatening students at an Islamic school just southwest of the city were both spread around the neighborhood and sent by post. In twenty twenty, the hate group Proud Boys plastered cars in Lincoln Square with phrases like B L M, burn, loot, murder, with imagery and symbols referring to the Ku Klux Klan. The examples are plenty with, with incidents targeting many of our diverse communities in Chicago. In our research, we learned from cities like San Diego, who have passed similar measures, that these hate groups use the trend of hate flier-ing because it keeps them one hair within the law, so that they know they will not be penalized. This is advantageous to them, as, as like I said, they monetize their ongoing operations and therefore do not want to break the law. That is what we seek to change in Chicago. The Stop Hate Littering Ordinance you will vote on makes narrowly tailored modifications to the law to provide, number one, a civil penalty for up to one thousand dollars per ticket to intimidating hate flier-ing, and number two, by tightening the law to deter hate groups from organizing this kind of flier-ing in Chicago going forward. It applies to materials left on your real or personal property, a car or a doorstep. It is not targeting someone who has a megaphone in the public way. Importantly, passing this Stop Hate Littering Ordinance was the first recommendation made by the Chicago Commission on Human Relations in their twenty twenty four annual report on hate crimes and incidents presented a few weeks ago. To close, our legal process here was exhaustive. Introducing this ordinance, I was clear on the need of passing language that would be immune to any kind of challenge. For the past few months, this ordinance has had over twelve versions between recommendations by the Department of Law, Chairperson Rodriguez Sanchez's committee, the city's constitutionality team, the Chicago Commission on Human Relations, the Chicago Police Department, L R B, the city's prosecutor, and myself as an attorney. Before you is an ordinance that will pass for years to come and that I hope other cities will mimic, as they hope to keep, to look to Chicago on how they can keep their residents safe. I'm so grateful for all the partners on this ordinance, whether it was drafting, um, or really culturing to council. Together, we can keep passing big and small policy in order to keep Chicago a safe and welcoming place for all of our communities. Thank you, and again, I ask for a unanimous favorable vote.
Very well, thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Chair Rodriguez Sanchez.
Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Does this complete your report, Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Very well, thank you very much. Uh, the next committee is the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chair recognizes Chair Sixtio Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on July tenth, twenty twenty four. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of twelve ordinances, including an amendment to a redevelopment agreement, three aldermanic introductions, and multiple land sales. The first item is, uh, from the Department of Housing. Item number one is an ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten eleven seven, acceptance of the reconvenance deeds from Becker Dyke Redevelopment Corporation for properties at twelve fifty six North Artisan Avenue, thirteen fifty three North Maplewood Avenue, thirty three oh one West Crystal Street, ten twenty North, North Ketsi Avenue, and release of thirty forty seven West Wabanchia Avenue from amendment redevelopment agreement in the twenty sixth Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next three items are aldermanic introductions. Uh, item number two is an ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero 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 ninety six fifty nine, designation of alloy real property at twenty thirty one dash, uh, two, twenty thirty three North Kingsbury Street, and annexation real property at twenty thirty two Clayborne Avenue as low affordability community in the second Ward. Item number three is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten one fifty nine, designation of twenty four eighteen to twenty four thirty North Milwaukee Avenue, uh, dash twenty thirty to twenty nine fifty West Fullerton Avenue as low affordability community in the first Ward. Item number four is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten one five five, designation of sixteen twenty eight West Division Street as low affordability community in the first Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The last eight items are all land sales from the Department of Planning and Development. Item five is ordinance twenty twenty four dash, dash, zero zero ten one ninety eight, sale of city-owned property within the Chai Block Builder Platform at nineteen fifty three East Seventy Second Place to Walter Green and sixty nine oh three South Dorchester Avenue to Theo Stur's Gates in the fifth Ward. Item six is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten one ninety five, sale of city-owned property within the Chai Block, Chai Block Builder Platform at seventy six thirty South Blackstone Avenue to Evelyn Hurd and at thirteen sixteen East Seventy Third Street to Andrea Carter in the eighth Ward. Item seven is the substitute ordinance and twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten two oh two, sale of city-owned property within Chai Block Builder Platform at eleven ninety four six South Union Avenue to Humu Isifu in the twenty first Ward. Item eight is an ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten one four five, sale of city-owned property within Chai Block Builder Platform at forty two oh five West Maple Avenue to Andrea Ortiz and Ricardo Rojas, Rosas, one forty two South Sacramento Boulevard to Vonta Brooks, thirty one oh three West Monroe Street to Stephen Stoltz and, and Bernita Stoltz, and forty two fifty eight West Van Buren Street to Robert A. Yates and Deborah Dora in the twenty eighth Ward. Item nine is an ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten one six six, sale of city-owned property within Chai Block Builder Platform at forty nine forty three West Ferdinand Avenue to Ilda Dominguez and Custorio Mora Vargas in the thirty seventh Ward. Item ten is an ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten two oh three, sale of vacant city-owned property as east at ninety one twenty one South Burley Avenue to Pilgrim Baptist Church of South Chicago Inc. in the tenth Ward. Item eleven is an ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten two oh four, sale of city-owned property at sixty six eighteen South Seeley Avenue under the adjacent neighbors' land acquisition program to Juan Carlos Mendez Delgado in the sixteenth Ward. And item sub, uh, twelve, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero ten two oh five, is the sale of city-owned property at fifty two twenty two South Indiana Avenue under adjacent neighbors' land acquisition program to Mildred Flynn and Deborah D. Haynes in the third Ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next committee is Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. The Chair recognizes Chair Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, which held a committee meeting on July second, twenty twenty four. There were two items on the agenda, the first being R twenty twenty three dash zero 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 one two six five, calling for examination of C P D's adjudication of U visa applications, which then passed as substitute resolution S R twenty twenty three dash zero 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 one two six five. The second was R twenty twenty four dash zero 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 seven three six seven, calling for the federal government to process and grant temporary protective status applications for Ecuadorians, which then passed as substitute resolution S R twenty twenty four dash zero 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 seven three six seven. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Our next committee is Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. The Chair recognizes Chair La Spada.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, which a meeting was held on Wednesday, July tenth, twenty twenty four. Before the committee, there were one hundred and forty four items. There were one hundred and forty two routine traffic items, all of which passed. At the quest, uh, request of C dot and the ward office, two items will be held in committee O twenty twenty four dash zero zero one zero four seven seven and O twenty twenty four dash zero zero one zero five six seven. The committee also passed two amendments to the Municipal Code pertaining to the Smart Streets Pilot, both of which were submitted, substituted in committee. S O twenty twenty four dash zero 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 seven seven six eight, which amends the end date of the Smart Streets Pilot to be the second anniversary of the date on which the first notice of violation is issued pursuant to the program, and S O twenty twenty four dash zero 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 nine six three four, which expands the referenced sections under the definition of covered offense for the Smart Streets Pilot to include metered parking violations. Before I move passage of these items, I believe Alderman Riley would like to speak on these two amendments. Alderman?
Very well, the Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, and, and thank you Chairman La Spada for presenting this, uh, ordinance in committee when I couldn't be there myself, or ordinances. Um, obviously, the Smart Streets Pilot Program, uh, is, uh, something near and dear to many of our hearts, and unfortunately, it's been delayed as the city has been working to select the appropriate technology vendor. Uh, and so it was important for us to extend, uh, this pilot program, um, so we get a good full two years of data to understand whether these changes, uh, are appropriate. I think they will be found to be, um, good changes, but we all see it in our wards, uh, the rampant abuse of loading zones, uh, the delivery of goods in, in traffic lanes, and the lack of enforcement. Uh, and unfortunately, these types of activities result in serious risk to public safety, especially for pedestrians and bicyclists, but also motorists. And so, uh, I want to thank the administration and, and Chairman La Spada, um, for helping bring these forwards so that we can have a robust pilot program, and hopefully, in the interim, uh, we'll see some improvement in, uh, compliance with our city ordinances that regulate the public right of way and especially loading, um, and delivery. So, uh, thank you, Chairman, thank you, Mr. President, and I would appreciate a, an eye vote. Thank you.
Very well, the Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Chairman La Spada for moving this forward. Uh, this was a conversation that sounds in its second term. A number of us, after increasing the fines for blocking bike lanes, uh, wanted to get residence-based reporting, and we're told, uh, that this would be a compromise. We wanted to see it move a lot faster. It's now over a year, and we haven't seen a pilot begin. We know that once it is implemented, it'll take a number of years to actually, um, get results and figure out how to expand it. So, as we talk about that, I also want to thank, uh, our colleague, the chairman, um, for also moving forward on the ability to have resident-based reporting, that in the meantime, while we don't have a pilot started, people are still out there, and this isn't just dangerous, it has proven to be deadly. There's been children that have died because we don't have a proper enforcement, and so as we continue conversations in the committee, um, one, I ask everyone to support this, but also that as we move forward to have residence-based reporting in the meantime, that is something our colleagues also, uh, support. Thank you very much.
Very well, are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this item or these items? Very well, the Chair recognizes Chair La Spada.
Thank you, Mr. President. If there are no objections, I move passage of these one hundred and forty two items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Clerk, could you please add, uh, Alder Ray Lopez to the roll call, please? Our next committee is Special Events, Cultural Affairs. Uh, the, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Begging leave of the body for my attire, having just got in from the airport. I not only thank you for adding me for quorum, but also want to be included on the first most favorable vote of Finance and unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, Mr. Clerk, thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Ruth Cruz.
Mr. President, I also would like to be added to the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please add both of those orders to the most favorable roll call in the subsequent unsuccessful motion to reconsider, to be technical. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also like to be added to the first roll call.
Very well, could you please add Alderman Curtis to the most favorable roll call in the subsequent motion to reconsider the one that failed? Very well, the next committee is Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Chair recognizes Chair Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on July tenth. Uh, the committee recommends passage of the following item. S O two zero two four dash zero 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 nine six three three, an amendment of Municipal Code Section ten dash eight dash three three two, allowing permits for athletic events which do not present unreasonable risk to health of participants, bystanders, or city personnel. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chair recognizes Chair Mitchell.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on July tenth, twenty twenty four. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Page two and three includes fifteen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from Ward six, twenty seven, thirty three, thirty four, thirty six, thirty eight, thirty nine, forty, forty five, and forty seven. Page four includes item ordinance two zero two four dash zero 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 nine eight one zero, uh, a proposed extension of the Ashland number nine bus route. Um, this item was introduced by Alderman, the local Alderman of the forty seventh Ward. Mr. President, per discussion with the Chairman, uh, Martin, he wants to hold this item, um, for further discussion with this community and C dot.
Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
To a different item that I think may be discussed later on in today's meeting. I apologize for the miscommunication, not this specific item. That is, that is on me. My apologies, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. So you withdraw the, the notion of the.
Apologize to the body. You're all.
Thank you.
All right, page five includes item zero, ordinance two zero two four, zero 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 nine three five three, an easement ordinance for a property located in the second ward, item O two, two four zero zero one zero zero eight seven, a time extension ordinance for a property located in the fourth ward, item ordinance two zero two four zero zero one zero zero five one, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the sixth ward, and an item O two, two four, zero 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 nine eight seven three, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the twenty seventh ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, our final committee today is the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Chair recognizes Vice Chair Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains the re-referral of document number O twenty twenty four zero 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 one zero zero three seven to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. I move passage of this item by the last most. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages one through twelve contain various map amendments in the second, third, eleventh, twelfth, seventeenth, twenty first, twenty second, twenty seventh, thirtieth, thirty second, thirty fourth, thirty sixth, thirty seventh, thirty eighth, fortieth, forty third, forty fourth, forty fifth, forty seventh, forty eighth and forty ninth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez. There it is.
There we go. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank our colleagues. Our item in the fortieth ward in conjunction with what will be coming in the forty seventh and forty ninth ward proposes an imagine a reimagining of the Western Avenue section. What it does is change the rezoning in a way that increases density affordability and really thinks about our city proactively. It's also to my understanding never been done in the city before. So I want to thank our colleagues and Alderwoman Silverstein for leading the Western Ave. Corridor study that led to these results. And so we're very proud and ask for support of the rest of the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? All right, there's a motion. Hearing no objections, you made the motion. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. That actually item is on my next report, but hold that thought. Keep that, keep that fresh. Lastly, page thirteen contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area twenty four feet above grade in the twenty seventh, thirty second, forty first and forty second wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
There are none, seeing none, so ordered.
Thank you. That concludes my first report. Mr. President, members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains the appointment of Swaffy Staley as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains the appointment of Helen Schiller as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number O two zero two four dash zero zero one zero one five four, the establishment of the Milwaukee Avenue Special Character Overlay District on North Milwaukee Avenue between Northwestern and North Ridgeway. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Page one contains the historic landmark designation for Hyde Park Union Church located in the fifth ward at fifty six hundred South Woodlong. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Moving on, pages one through eight contain various map amendments in the sixth, eighth, twenty first, twenty fifth, twenty seventh, twenty ninth, thirty second, thirty fourth, thirty fifth, thirty eighth, thirty ninth, fortieth, forty first, forty third, forty seventh and forty eighth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, noting that document number O two zero two four dash zero zero one zero zero three eight will be held in committee and also noting that Alderman Conway recused himself from voting under the provisions of Rule fourteen on document number O two zero two four dash zero zero one zero zero three six.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Lastly, page eight contains two large signs over one hundred square feet in area twenty four feet above grade in the second ward. I will passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for the agreed upon calendar. Matters on the agreed upon calendar. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you. I received from clerk Andrea in Valencia told of three hundred and five items proposed as a agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from clerk Valencia from the following Alderpersons. Alderperson Hopkins, Alderperson Dow, Alderperson Robinson, Alderperson Yancy, Alderperson Howe, Alder Paul, Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Chico, Alderperson Ramirez, Alderperson Quinn, Alderperson Lopez, Alderperson Coleman, Alderperson Tabarez, Alderperson Scott, Alderperson Wagga Spack, Alderperson Ramirez Rosa, Alderperson Gardner, Alderperson Clay, Alderperson Manaha Happenworth, Alderperson Hattan. Before I approve it, I just want to acknowledge Grubhub's twentieth anniversary and I don't know if they could stay, but the CEO Howard Magdo was here. Stand up. Are they here? Okay.
Hey, all right. Congratulations.
SP, SPV, Dave Tolver, Vice President, he's Vice President JR Starlet, Samantha Stinson and Brett Swanson are all here with Grubhub and I want to just say congratulations on twenty wonderful years. With that, I move that we pass these in the omnibus, Mr. President.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. New business, Mr. Clerk.
The zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, an exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Silverstein has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty three to disallow additional package goods licenses on portions of Northwestern Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License. Alderman Silverstein also has proposed ordinance for approval of Regent's Park Two re-subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Haddon and Alderman Taylor have proposed resolution to call on U.S. Congress to strengthen and enforce railroad safety standards, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection. Alderman Haddon, Alderman Hopkins and Alderman Cruz have proposed resolution to call for hearings on bird friendly building designs in the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection. Alderman Anaha Happenworth has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at fifty nine thirty seven North Broadway, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero twenty two to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Lawrence Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection.
Alderman Mitchell for approval of the journal? Or excuse me. Oh, pardon me.
Alderman Knudsen has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section seventeen dash fourteen dash zero three zero one A, allowing designation of alternate member to Zoning Board of Appeals in event of vacancy, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderman Knudsen also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code by modifying section eight dash four dash zero eighty three prohibiting material on private or personal property that causes intimidation or threats of personal injury against a person or group, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for approval of Friar servants and Mary and apartments re-subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderman Napolitano has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at eight thirty eight South Paxton Drive, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderman Vasquez has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the fortieth ward wage allowance automatic expense account for the year two thousand and twenty four, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Lopez, Sichu Lopez, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and Alderman Manaha Happenworth and Alderman Haddon have proposed resolution to call for hearings on the examination and improvement of extreme weather response plans, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderperson Vegas has proposed resolution to call on the Department of Procurement Services to facilitate vendor selection for city technology assessment, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderperson Vegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code at chapter two dash one twenty by adding a new article five establishing Small Business Advisory Council, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderperson Vegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code at section ten dash twenty dash one fifty five, requiring city coordination on pavement restoration work impacting sixty percent or more of a sidewalk, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for designation of North Milwaukee Avenue between North Whistler Avenue and North Kezzi Avenue as low affordability community, which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles five and seven by adding new chapters five dash eleven entitled Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Block Six oh six District Pilot Program and by modifying section seventeen dash seven dash zero five nine zero, redefining boundaries of six oh six district, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa has proposed order for issuance of permits for signed sign boards at twenty nine thirty four North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Steve Albini Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Conway has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at twenty five East Washington Street, Jeweler's Row Landmark District, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Conway also has proposed ordinance for vacation of portion of South May Street between West Roosevelt Road and West Taylor Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Wagga Spack has proposed order for the issuing of permits for signed sign boards at twenty four oh one North Clyburn Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Cardona has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Daryl Robinson Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Cruz has proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the thirtieth ward wage allowance automatic expense account, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Cruz also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on delays of Grayland Station Project, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Lee and Alderperson, Alderperson Irvin and Alderperson Lee have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section eight dash four dash one twenty seven prohibiting cyber talking, cyber flashing and harassment through electronic communications, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderperson Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Sichu Lopez and others have proposed resolution to call on U.S. President Biden to remove Cuba from state sponsored terrorism list and complete restoration of travel and trade, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Sichu Lopez also has proposed ordinance for approval of Reina subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at thirty one fifteen West Twenty Sixth Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Tabarez has proposed ordinance for designation of the second precinct of the twenty third ward as a restricted cannabis zone, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Tabarez also has proposed ordinance for designation of the sixth precinct of the twenty third ward as a restricted cannabis zone, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Tabarez also has proposed ordinance for designation of the ninth precinct of the twenty third ward as a restricted cannabis zone, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Tabarez also has proposed ordinance for designation of the second precinct of the twenty third ward as a restricted residential zone and prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, excuse me, designation of the second precinct of the twenty third ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Tabarez also has proposed ordinance for designation of the sixth precinct of the twenty third ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Tabarez also has proposed orders for designation of the ninth precinct of the twenty third ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Tabarez also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. And a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Police Officer Samuel Jimenez Road, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Rodriguez has proposed ordinance for transfer of funds within the Committee on Workforce Development for the year two thousand and twenty four, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Rodriguez also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at thirty eight hundred West Twenty Sixth Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Rodriguez has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Manuela Manuelera Garcia Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderpersons Moore and others have proposed ordinance for the superintendent of Police directed to enter into and execute new contract or contract extension or renewal for acoustic gunshot detection technology services, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Committees and Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Mitchell called a Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Hall, I'm sorry. Two committees were called. The original committee it was called was Public Safety. The second committee that was called was Rules, the matter goes to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Apologies, Alderperson Hall. Alderman Moore has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Johnny L. Tyus, the Hat Man Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Moore also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Mark S. Allen Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Ramirez has proposed resolution to call for hearings on the issues of hate and discrimination in the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Ramirez also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderpersons Lee and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on Chicago Police Department's adherence to the Illinois Domestic Violence Act, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Public Safety and the members of the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderperson Beal has proposed resolution for amendment of the City Council Rules of Order Procedure for the two thousand and twenty three through two thousand and twenty seven term by deleting Rule fifty nine, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Harris has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash two forty four dash one forty to prohibit peddling on portions of East Seventy Ninth Street and East Seventy Eighth Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Robinson has proposed order for the historical landmark fee waiver for the property at thirty four oh two South Giles Avenue, the Kelly McGiles Prairie District, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Dow has a proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at twenty four oh one South Wavash Avenue, the Quinn Chapel, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alderperson Hopkins has proposed resolution for expression of support for the U.S. Congress and President Biden to pass the American Center for Cures legislation, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Hopkins has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Dennis Downs Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Hopkins also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Benjamin H. Marshall Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson La Spada and others have proposed resolution to call for establishment of interagency working group to assess and redesign speed limit enforcement structure and practices in the city of Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderperson La Spada and others also have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section nine dash twelve dash zero seventy by setting the absolute statutory urban speed limit to twenty five miles per hour, which is referred to the Committee on Traffic and Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety and the Committee on the Budget and Budget and Government Operations, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Amendment of municipal code section nine dash twelve dash zero seventy by setting absolute statutory urban speed limits to twenty five miles per hour. Alderperson La Spada and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter nine dash one oh eight by adding a new section nine dash one oh eight dash zero twenty five, establishing public enforcement pilot program for citizens to submit recorded evidence of covered parking violations, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderperson La Spada has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Frank Lopez Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson La Spada also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Healthcare and Alternative Systems Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Alderperson Riley has proposed ordinance for execution of an amendment to a pedestrian walkway easement, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of automatic introductions.
Thank you. Alderman Mitchell for approval of the journal.
Madam President, I move approval of the journal.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm aware of three pieces of unfinished business. The first piece of unfinished business was filed by Alderman Lawson and I defer to him.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Madam President. I filed a Rule forty one notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on substitute ordinance two thousand and twenty four dash zero 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 eight four five two regarding zoning reclassification map number seven dash I at twenty four eighteen through twenty four twenty six North Milwaukee Avenue, application number two two three eight nine T one, which was deferred and published on June twelfth, two thousand and twenty four. I move passage of this item by a voice vote.
Does anyone wish to speak to this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Mitchell?
Has moved to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? No. Opposed, no. The motion fails. Alderman Mitchell?
The second piece of unfinished business was filed by Alderman Dahl, and I defer to her.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Dahl.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. I filed a Rule forty-one notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on ordinance twenty-two thousand four dash zero 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 nine six zero zero regarding the issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds to H.P.U.M.C. Redevelopment Limited Partnership for low-income rental housing at twenty-one twenty North Mozart Street, which was deferred and published on June twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. I move passage of this item by a voice vote.
Very well, does anyone else wish to speak to this item? All right, seeing no hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very well. Alderman Mitchell, a motion to reconsider?
Mr. President, a motion to reconsider that vote?
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, this motion fails, thank you, Alderman Mitchell.
For the final piece of unfinished businesses is the item that was, uh, I referred to earlier, I was filed by Alderman Martin. But at this time, he does not wish to proceed with this item.
Very well. Do you wish to be recognized? All right, the Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Simply to confirm what Alderman Mitchell shared, thank you.
Very well, thank you. Alderman Mitchell, is there any other unfinished business?
Mr. President, I am not aware of any further pieces of unfinished business.
Very well, for Melissa, oh shoot, for miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
I love it, I love it. I've squared two pieces of miscellaneous business filed by Alderman Harris and Alderman Irvin. The first piece of miscellaneous business was filed by Alderman Harris, and I defer to her.
Thank you, the Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish not to proceed with this item today.
Very well. The second piece. That's it? Yep. Very well. Alderman Irvin, the second piece.
Now, the second piece of unmiscellaneous business was filed by Alderman Irvin, and now I'll defer to him.
Very well, the Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I provided notice to the city clerk of my intention to call for a vote today on an ordinance relating to the chief procurement officer. This ordinance aligns with the tenure of position with other city department heads and also authorizes corporation counsel to execute a severance agreement with the current CPO, and it will enable us as a city to move forward with the appointment of a new chief procurement officer. I recognize that bringing this item before the body in this matter is unusual, but it has properly been posted and noticed so that the requisite forty-eight hours notice under the Open Meetings Act is, uh, has been met, and I also intend to seek suspension of the rules in order to consider it. Accordingly, if my request for suspension is successful, the ordinance is something that we can legally consider regardless of the fact that it has not been through the committee process. For this reason, I'm proceeding in this matter, uh, in this fashion as we face an emergency and the fact that we have, uh, it is essential that the city, a major metropolis, has a person managing procurement at all times. We simply cannot afford a vacuum in this leadership. And so again, I'm bringing this before you for immediate consideration. With that, I move that we can, uh, suspend the rules, um, to allow for the hearing of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance. Anyhow, successful motion to reconsider.
Very well, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the City Council. At our last meeting, I sent to rules the ordinance that strictly dealt with the severance authority being granted to the Law Department in order to pursue a settlement with our current chief procurement officer. That is not what is before us today. This is a piece of new business. It's actually two new ordinances melded into one for the purposes of doing two different things of which no committee has heard this. This specific ordinance. That is not how we do business, Mr. President. You have said so yourself. Mr. Jeff Levine has said that numerous times to members of this room, old and new, that anything of substance must go before a committee. Understanding what I had just heard from the good chairman. But this action sets precedent for us now moving forward to just take anything off the floor and push it through on the same day. Noticed or not, this has not gotten a proper hearing. It has not had a proper discussion or public input. And we are pushing through with this today under the guise that we have to do it because we apparently have a leadership vacuum within the Department of Procurement Services. We have a young woman who was capable and qualified while we await resolution on this matter in the proper channels. She notified us all the moment the current chief procurement officer took her thirty-day leave after our last city council meeting. Signing authority was transferred. Government still rolls. The department still functions. Nothing has fallen to the wayside while the acting chief procurement officer fulfills her duties in accordance with the law. And yet here we are not having the functional debate as required. This matter, Mr. President, should be referred to committee. This matter should be discussed, debated, and voted on by committee members in accordance to how we do business here and have done business here for as long as I've been here and as long as all of you have been here. There is no fabricated emergency that requires us to ignore the law, ignore the rules, and act now. So I would ask that this, Mr. President, actually, I take that back. I move, Mr. President, to refer this matter to committee where it belongs, to the Budget and Government Operations Committee where it belongs. And I ask for a roll call vote on that motion to refer it back to committee.
Right, so there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, so your motion is premature. There's no item officially yet.
Okay, then I call the question on suspending the rules. Good to be home.
Thank you very much, so there's a motion to call the question. Um, a yes vote means you wish to stop debate and move forward with the motion to suspend the rules to take up the item. And are you requesting a roll call vote?
I'm calling the question.
Calling the question, right. Okay, Mr. Clerk. Okay, so points for clarification, just a second. Alderman, Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Uh, two things, number one, um, you're, you're asking to call a question on the suspension. Okay, I mean, we've got two people that would like to speak to your point. I think we've always had tradition, a lot of people to speak before we vote on something. Uh, point number one, point number two, uh, this matter was heard in committee. Uh, you just happened not to be in committee when it was heard, but it was heard in committee at our last, uh, Committee on Budget and Government Operations meeting to answer these very questions that you're raising today. It did go through the committee process. We did have a conversation around this issue so that people would know and understand because it is a little bit unusual to bring something directly to the floor. So it was discussed in committee while not voted on because it's being voted on today to, so that we can move forward and move forward trying to eradicate some of the challenges and issues that we've been dealing with as a city where we look at participation from some communities, uh, below two percent. So if you want to hold us up again on trying to bring additional dollars to communities, please do so. But I, I stand to data say that, uh, we need to move forward so that we can start spending the largesse of this city across all communities of our city. You want to hold us hostage, please do so, I, I choose not to.
Okay, so there, just a second, so there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. The question has been called. There's a tradition that allows for folks to speak to the motion. Alderman Lopez, would you withdraw your motion to call the question so that we can fulfill tradition in this body today?
Actually, Mr. President, I have to clarify something. Calling the question isn't a motion, it just ends debate. It's not, it's not something for debate.
So fair enough, so would you be willing to withdraw your question, your call into question so that the few folks who are ready to wrap this meeting up can at least speak to the item? Would you be willing?
I'm sticking with calling the question. Since apparently tradition doesn't matter anymore.
Very well, so calling a question is a motion for the, to move forward with the suspension of the rules. And it's non-debatable. Okay, so there's been a request for a roll call to suspend the rules. To call the question. A yes vote, you means you wish to proceed and immediately to a vote for this item under suspending the rules. Yes. So again, if you vote no, you wish to continue to debate. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
To call the question? No, it's not on item number, it's on the motion to suspend. On rule suspension. No, hold on. Wait. We need to reword it, sorry. He had on, on the item, we, we're just putting it so it makes sense. It's motion to call the question on the rule suspension. We just want to make sure that that was clear for everyone. So voting is now open, please hit refresh and please vote.
All right, listen, direct the, the voting is now open to call the question to end debate. That's what we're discussing. And then once debate is just, 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 okay, thank you. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lopez, just, we'll get it clarified. I believe everybody knows what we're voting on, we're voting to, to end debate, but we'll get the actual clarification. All right, very well. Please, members of the body, this council, just, just settle for a second. Alderman Lopez. Gentlemen, please. It's, it's not worth it, gentlemen, all right? It's not, all right. Rule twenty-one. When a question is on a debate, the following motion, motions shall be in order. Shall have precedence over each other in order as listed. And we're going to go right to number five, which is the previous question. The voting is still open. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
For clarity's sake, can we please make it very clear? Actual motion?
It's very good, thank you. I just need everybody just to relax and calm down. You'll get vacations soon enough, you all, at least some of us will. The question has been called. And the question that has been called is to end debate. So this motion passes, debate will end, and then we will proceed with a direct vote on the matter to suspend the rules to take up the item. We're almost there. Just, let's, let's allow for voting to close first, and then if there are others that wish to speak for more clarification and understanding, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alder Person Robinson?
Yes.
Alder Person Robinson is a yes. Alder Woman Gutierrez?
Yes.
Alder Woman Gutierrez is a yes. Alder Woman Taylor?
Yes.
Alder Woman Taylor is a yes. Alder Woman Scott?
Yes.
Alder Woman Scott is a yes. Alderman Burnett? Alderman Burnett? Alder, Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alder Woman Clay?
Yes.
Alder Woman Clay is a yes. Voting is now closed.
Very well, there are forty-nine yays. There is one nay, this motion passes. The question has been called, debate is ended. The Chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Not to be a stickler, debate isn't ended. The question was called to temporarily suspend the rules so we can talk. And so I wanted to speak on this item that the chairman asked for rules to be suspended on. And just wanted to clarify, we can still talk about this, the base not over. He just called the question in order to suspend the rules, which we approved. Um, I'd like to speak to this item. It did come up in Budget Committee yesterday. And, uh,
Just a second, Alder, Alder Woman Haddon.
This is really not confusing.
Alder Woman Haddon, here's what I'm ruling as Chair. We still have to pass the motion to suspend the rules.
That's what we just did.
No, we didn't. No, we actually called the question to end debate on whether or not we should suspend the rules. So once we suspend the rules, it is at that point that you could speak or anyone else. And you have my word on that.
Oh, all right.
Okay, very well. So now we will take up the matter to suspend the rules. Of course, there's a roll call vote. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please, um, open up the roll call, the e-vote? The, the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up this item. That motion passes, then Alders will be able to speak at that point.
Voting is now open. Please cast your vote using your e-device. I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alder Person Robinson. Alder Person Robinson.
Robinson, the yes.
Alder Person Robinson is a yes. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is a yes. Alder Woman Gutierrez.
Yes.
Alder Woman Gutierrez is a yes. Alder Woman Taylor.
Yes.
Alder Woman Taylor is a yes. Alder Woman Scott.
Yes.
Alder Woman Scott is a yes. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Spazato. Not in chambers. Alderman Gardner, oh, you cast your vote. Alder Woman Clay.
Yes.
Alder Woman Clay is a yes. Okay. Voting is now closed.
There are 43 yays, six nays. The motion to suspend the rules has passed. Chair recognizes Alder Woman Haddon, as I promised.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so as Chairman Irvin mentioned, we, we did look at this item and had the opportunity to discuss and debate it in, uh, committee. And, um, I would encourage my colleagues to support it. Um, we have been in a unique position with this, um, role. And I think changing our code in order to align it with all of our other chief, uh, positions makes a lot of sense. And more importantly, um, working on the authorization for our departments to negotiate, uh, you know, termination, severance packages, and, uh, what is necessary is going to be what allows us to move forward and just puts us in line with every other position that we're working with. Um, so I think it's notable, this doesn't really change much as far as what we're used to for our chief positions and making sure that, you know, mayor picks an appointment, they still have to be approved by city council. And this is such an important department. We've had public speaker after public speaker, time and again, month after month, raise concerns about procurement efforts, what our numbers look like. We know we need to, um, move forward with this. So hope my colleagues, um, uh, vote aye on this. And thanks to, uh, Chairman Irvin for bringing it forward.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Mits.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm standing today since we had reorganization of committees. You all elected me as the Chair of Contracts and Oversight Committee. Well, let me tell you today. It is a shame that nothing, absolutely nothing, have been able to move on that committee. Not because it's not work to do. There's a lot of work and a lot of money that's going through the committee with no oversight. None. None. And I'd be darned if I'd be used as a pawn on any chairman. Till sometimes I say to myself, I'll give it back. If you notice, I pull my staff off. I don't want to misuse taxpayer dollars, you all. This is serious. So I'll say, we done went a year in. Started out trying to hold events because the public do not even know how to engage with procurement. Holding outreach events in the neighborhood. And all of us, for a whole year, we've lost this opportunity because we have a commissioner or CPO who was there. It was either her way or the highway. Her way or the highway. And anytime we have anyone who feel they are above the folks who put them in office have no regulation, we in trouble. Her staff were in trouble. I'mma put it out here. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whoever decide to pull her out. Now we got a time to string this out. Yeah, you make your move too soon, I think. By pulling her without looking at a contract, which leaves us here today trying to settle the contract in order to get her out of there so the city of Chicago can move forward. And that's why we here today. Do we want to move forward? We should have had it in the council a long time ago. This should have been done. But we're here now. So don't waste this time and don't waste taxpayer money fooling around here trying to figure out what we didn't have. I'm telling you what you didn't have, nothing. And you ain't got nothing going there. I came in being on the mayor, I beat him up, I beat the staff up, everybody up. Because how do you have a committee that's not working for the city of Chicago, for the taxpayers here? I'm getting too many complaints, contractors who are not being paid fair. General contractors misusing the self-contractors. Jesus Christ, what are we doing? We need to settle this stuff so I can go home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. What Emma said. For the last year and a half, the Department of Procurement Services has failed the taxpayers of this city. If there's people in this room that don't know what those failures have been, shame on you. This has been a problem. There's a topic we like to talk about in here, equity. Underserving black and brown communities. That's who's lost under that leadership. My colleague Chairman Irvin said we got to move forward. Folks, we, we, we got to move forward. We got to put this to bed today. The failures of the Department of Procurement Services touches every single department in our city. It's pathetic what has gone on. We have to get this done today. We have to move our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I really appreciate my colleague saying that. Um, as a Chair of the Community and Immigrant Refugee Rights, during the beginning of the crisis, we spoke to procurement regularly to make changes so that we could actually make sure that communities that were in the city were getting paid to do the kind of work that was necessary during the crisis. Every conversation we had with the procurement officer, nothing was done. It doesn't border on incompetence. It crossed right over into full incompetence. No answers to anything at all. As the Vice Chair of Latino Caucus, sometimes you think about representation. It didn't represent us well. So we're, some of us agree fully that we need to change it and all need to move forward. So just wanted to add my voice to my colleagues. We were not served. The public was not served. The dollars that were spent, that could have been spent better into like citizens of Chicago for doing that work, didn't happen because of this procurement officer. We met with the prior procurement officer who said we could get that stuff done in about a week or two. This procurement officer did not and doesn't show up and hasn't shown up. So when we think about the cost, it's everything else folks are talking about, but also in the middle of a crisis, when those of us wanted to actually unite the city, she stood in the middle and divided it. So again, I agree with my colleagues, we need to move forward and, and let's finish this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders, Alders that wish to speak to this item before I refer it back to Alder Irvin? Hearing, seeing no other hands, Chair recognizes, um, Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, uh, I think enough has been said on this. Uh, I think we just need to move forward and, um, and again, move forward to a new chapter uh, where is, uh, Chairperson Mits talks about greater level of inclusivity, of getting out in the communities. And again, using the purchasing power of our city to empower its residents fully. With that, I, I ask for a roll call vote.
Very well, so there's a roll call vote for this motion. Uh, please use your e- vote devices to cast your vote.
Voting is now open. I'll now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alder Person Robinson.
Yes.
Alder Person Robinson is a yes. Alder Woman Gutierrez.
Yes.
Alder Woman Gutierrez is a yes. Alder Woman Taylor.
Yes.
Alder Woman Taylor is a yes. Alder Woman Scott.
Yes.
Alder Woman Scott is a yes. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alder Woman Clay.
Yes.
Alder Woman Clay is a yes. Voting is now closed.
Very well, voting is now closed. There are 50 yays, zero nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote?
All those in favor of reconsidering this vote signify by saying aye. All those, all those opposed say no.
No.
Motion fails. Alderman Mitchell to return back to the regular order of business. And a motion to return back to the regular order of business.
Mr. President, I move that return to the regular order.
Very well, hearing, no objections, so ordered. Um, is this all Alderman Mitchell?
Except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of any further miscellaneous business.
Very well, then the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up to the clerk and ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Very well, Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago. Section one, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, beginning at 10 o'clock a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor of City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Very well, Alderman Mitchell.
First, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Um, Alderman Mitchell on the omnibus.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.